Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 20, 2012, meeting of the Adana City Council and the Adana Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. Next activity under the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the form of meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
If it's moved in second, we approve the meeting agenda. Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Bennett?
Yes, your honor, I would like to remove 4E, please, and 4K.
Okay, all right.
I was E, so that's done.
All right, I was gonna do L, so let's take E, K, and L off.
Mayor also G.
G, mayor.
Okay, very good. With the exception of E, G, K, and L under the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved in second, we approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exclusion of E, G, K, and L. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And now, let's go right to item E, which is the encroachment agreement that was proposed for the consent agenda at 4166 Monterey Avenue. Member Bennett, you have this matter.
Yes, thank you, your honor. I had just a couple questions about it. No objection to it, just would like to know whether the proposed use of this unimproved right-of-way will raise or lower the grade, and if Director Hul, who is the staff reporter on this, would show us, there's a plan attached, but it would be helpful to kind of be walked through the diagram.
As Mr. Hul approaches the microphone, we'd like to tell you that, I will tell you, that this agreement is something that kind of comes out of our experience with Lynn and Little, and so that's where this comes from, and this is our attempt to try to get in front of an issue that you would no doubt have come your way had we not done this tonight.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Hul.
Mayor Hovland, what does the encroachment agreement that includes this, is if I can point out a couple items on here, first is this dark line through here is the property line, that actually, before the vacation of this corner here, came around with a big arch through this area here, and then the council vacated that this fall, this corner. For them to actually place their driveway along this area and have a tuck-under garage, and not to have a retaining wall along the north edge of their driveway, is that they would basically shave off this, there's a, the grade is coming up towards the house at this location, and so that they would actually shave off this a little bit, and then create a swell through this area here that you see the contour line. So they would actually be lowering the grade in the unimproved easement or unimproved right-of-way, restoring this area here, and then, I believe, we have planting of four trees that would be located and picked out by our city forester.
I can understand where the swell was being built, but...
Pardon me?
The little notch out where you said that they're putting in...
Yep, this area here is where there would be a swell, so that the driveway in this area could drain towards that portion of the right-of-way.
So, why does it drain on an unimproved right-of-way? Why would we want that to happen?
One is, I look at it that it doesn't, it actually is, would drain into this unimproved right-of-way, there's no structures to the north of this, so it actually would, in my opinion, we'd want this to drain into this area, so that it would infiltrate into the ground, from a stormwater perspective, versus having them drain it out to the roadway, and then down through the storm sewer system.
So, a reduction in surface water going through the system?
Right, right.
Okay, but there's a tree there?
Yes, there's a smaller tree that needs to be removed, and I believe it's a cottonwood.
And there are four trees that will be planted to replace that tree, where will they be planted?
Some of those would be planted along the unimproved right-of-way. It is actually, this beyond where it says unimproved right-of-way, this is really vegetated through that area.
Yes, it's very heavily vegetated.
So what I'd be proposing is to plant as much as we could through there, and then at least plant some, a boulevard tree or two.
Okay, but that little notched-out area where the water is supposed to go, won't end up by default becoming an area to back into or any kind of usable extension?
No, the way that this is shown is that it would be too steep to do that.
Okay.
Member Bennett?
And there are some other tree removals depicted as well that are not in the right-of-way? Is that correct?
Yes, and I believe those, when I visited the site last week, I believe all those have been removed, on the remainder of the property.
They're on a home ordered property.
Yep, yep, on private property, yep.
Okay. So the resulting grade after the re-grading is done, will be at what, you've shown us that there is a rise in the grade from the north to the property. Where approximately what grade will the resulting grade match?
The, just within the solid, or the darker dash line, is actually the extent of the encroachment itself, so they'll be matching in real closely, so they're not, so it's not where they would come in and remove everything within this area here, it's that they would just come along this line, and then up around, and then match in the grade at that location.
And I will comment that, I'm very familiar with this area, and there are water issues for a lot of residents, because this is former Pete Bog, and so one of my concerns, when I started to read this item, was that there was going to be some kind of shifting that could result in more drainage on others' properties, and I was relieved to see that it looked like instead it, there was a swell being created, and I think it does make sense to be trying to address the stormwater by infiltration, rather than sending it into the street, so I appreciate that.
Right.
All right, would you care to move this matter?
Yes, I will move this matter.
Second.
All right, if it's moved in second, then we adopt item, agenda item 4E, which is the encroachment agreement for 4166 Monterey Avenue. Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And the next matter we pulled on the consent agenda was E, the, excuse me, G, the request for purchase of countryside park playground equipment, and Member Sprague, you had pulled that one.
Thank you, your honor. I just had a couple questions on the play structure and the process. I see that we used the neighborhood committee again, how did that go?
Did one really well. We had six very involved members.
Okay, so that's kind of the same process we use on Chowin Park?
Exactly, yes.
And is that a process we hope to use in the future?
Most definitely.
Okay.
We're using the same process for the countryside shelter building.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for instituting that, I think that's gonna be very successful. In terms of the description here, it said that they selected the design to make the experience fun and challenging for people of all abilities. It's not universal design, though, is it?
It's not a completely universal design, but that was very high on the list of the neighborhood committee, to make sure that it was an accessible structure, and one of the main things that we're doing in this structure that is fairly unique, is a completely poured-in-place play structure. When you look at the diagram that I included, you can see everything that's in green is a rubber poured-in-place surface, so it's completely accessible.
Could you actually, could we show this on the overhead there?
Certainly.
Okay.
And the one change that I would have is the area underneath the swings, we had originally planned on using a wood bark underneath there, and we have decided to put a completely poured-in-place surface underneath the entire structure, to make it completely accessible.
So that's the rubber?
Yes.
Okay. And then, in terms of metal versus plastic, I've seen different mixes on different systems, is there any logic to that choice in terms of materials, or is it more about the activities being done?
You know, it was very much about the activities being used. I think as far as the durability of the structures, I think you'll see pretty much the same type of durability on all the different types of play systems now, but the neighbors had many, many different choices and different types of play equipment to choose, and they chose this one particularly for the amount of play value that it provided.
Okay.
Member Swenson?
The system that we're taking out, where's it going?
You know, that's a great question. We have not gotten to that point yet, but I would like to pursue some donation opportunities.
Okay, and you're moving this, the location of the play equipment, to the west side where there's more shade, is that also correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
What larger area does this play structure cover?
You know, I'm sorry, Mayor Hovland, I don't have that exact answer, but I would say that it is safely the same footprint as the structure that we have right now, maybe slightly larger.
Okay, good. Member Sprague, I interrupted you, I apologize.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, if there's no further questions, I'd be happy to move the matter, do you have something?
I'm happy to second, but I do have a couple of questions.
Sure. It's good, we got a motion in a second, and we got just questions, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Assistant Director Cotry, how was that neighborhood committee selected?
We had a neighborhood representative who then reached out to the Neighborhood Association, and we had volunteers.
And how did you find the neighborhood representative?
You know, that's a great question, and John might be able to answer that, but she approached me when I started the process, and she is their local neighborhood representative, so she had been involved in the neighborhood process early on, and she knew that we were going to be working on the playground, so she approached me as the primary representative.
I have a little bit of familiarity, I think it was through the Countryside Neighborhood Association.
Yes.
I think they have delegated different responsibilities or areas of interest on their steering committee.
Yes.
So it's good to see that this is working, and I heard a lot of satisfaction.
Good, it's working very well, and as I mentioned, they were fabulous with the shelter building as well.
Great. Then my other question is, Member Sprague questioned metal or plastic, and I'm looking in, I didn't think that I missed anything in the description, is it metal or plastic that you're constructing for the play equipment itself?
It is primarily metal.
Okay.
All right, good. Any other questions? We've got a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter was 4K, Member Bennett.
Yes. Your honor, we considered this a request similar to this previously, and I guess I asked at that time, or Member Brindle and I both asked about what the practice had been in the past, and then also what our underlying philosophy or principle was, and at that time, we, Manager Neil identified that it has been done for some projects in the past, not done for others, and we don't have a principle. After looking at this today, what I note is that one of the three projects is an enterprise, and two of the three projects are not, and if fees were paid for the two projects that are not an enterprise, they would come out of the general fund, if paid, they go back into the general fund. So that seems a fairly easy decision to me, or a fairly straightforward principle, that why would we simply shift the money from one part of the general fund to the other? It's a little more difficult for me with an enterprise. I understand that if we waive the fees for the golf dome, we then get to apply more of the insurance proceeds for the loss of the previous golf dome toward the actual construction of the dome itself, rather than for an administrative cost. However, as an enterprise, it has its own budget, and there's a loss of transparency when this happens. I guess my question is, where would those, the costs come from for that permit if they're not coming out of the enterprise fund itself?
Thank you, Councilmember Bennett. The purpose, of course, to bring this to you is to have complete transparency about how we're making this decision, and your analysis is on the mark. The one thing that I'll tell you about the golf dome project is we have, we are quickly kind of realizing, after we haven't completed our negotiations yet with the insurance carrier, but we will have, if we're going to rebuild the golf dome that we used to have before it burned down, we are going to have to make a cash contribution to that project. We will not have, unless we are successful in pursuing the, either the electrical contractor or the equipment manufacturer, whatever, who's ever caused the fault, unless we're able to pursue them for damages, which we ought to be able to, we'll have cash out of pocket for that project. How much that's gonna be, we're still trying to pin that down with travelers right now, but we will have some. And that $23,000, while that's not going to make the difference in that project, it would come out of the construction fund, or it would come out of the golf enterprise fund, which currently, you know, is about a, about almost 100% cost recovery, but not quite. Does that, does that answer your question?
Well, if the city is needing to contribute toward the cost, in what, in what amount would that contribution likely be sought or made, and how would that be handled in terms of bookkeeping or accounting auditing?
That amount hasn't, we haven't been able to determine what that number is going to be, with any sense of, with any sense of accuracy at this point, but it will be more than $100,000, probably much more than that. Where would that money come from? We'd have to identify a location in our budget or in our capital spending, where we would probably reprioritize something, I would guess, to be able to do that.
So we know there's going to be a cost, we know that it's going to amount to about a third of our general fu, about a third of the, let's see, if 300,000 is 1% of our general fund every year, then this would be?
Yep, it's about 1% of our general fund spending, right?
Okay, 'cause it's about 30 million?
Mm-hmm.
Do we know then that we're going forward with it at that cost?
No, we don't. No, we don't. I don't know that yet. I won't know that until we have a chance to pin down all of our numbers and all of our budget, and bring that back to you for a go or no-go decision. And we don't have that set of numbers pinned down well enough yet with commitments from travelers that we're able to do that for you tonight.
And then we haven't worked, an attendant question would be, how long would it take us to recover that investment? Is there sort of a cost-benefit analysis that justifies that amount of spending?
Well, we're not talking about it yet.
Understood, but that, so the decision before us is to waive the fees, I'm wondering if that part of this isn't perhaps premature, if we don't know whether or not we're even proceeding with it.
If we choose to waive the fees and we don't go ahead with that, so I'm gonna move this out of it.
Second. You have more questions, Member Bennett?
No, but I wish I were voting on two-thirds of it, not the full thing.
Got that.
I had a motion in a second, to adopt the recommendation set forth with respect to waiver of building permit fees in three projects, item 4K. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Abstention?
Yeah, thank you.
Matter passes. I had pulled the next one, which was 4L, which is the revised RGM Construction Management Services contract for the dome. The only reason I pulled this was to just get an update on the dome, and we got a bit of an update here, through Member Bennett's questioning on the prior matter, but questions I get from folks sort of continually are, when is the dome gonna be up and operational? And sometimes I hear March, sometimes I hear February, and I'm just wondering if you could provide any enlightenment on that.
I can, I can tell you that right now, we are still working through, and you heard me say this before, but it's becoming more and more precise now, we're still working through what it will cost to rebuild the dome at the same, using the same service levels and the same quality of play as what we had before, determining what the cost, the potential cost of that project might be, and then working directly with travelers under a couple different coverages that we have, to determine how to best maximize our insurance coverage for the various kinds of improvements that we're doing. So we have one coverage level for the loss itself, we have another coverage level for improvements that we're making to the dome, to rebuild it, that are caused by changes in building code or other kind of regulatory requirements. So we're trying to be fairly aggressive in squeezing as much of this project into one of those two categories of insurance coverage as we can, to be very frank with you, and we've been open with travelers about that as well. We want to maximize as much of our coverage as we can, we also want to pursue, using the same subrogation attorney, the recovery of any costs that we might have outside of our insurance coverage.
Good. So in terms of projections on when it might be open, is there a range?
I would say that we've given you so many answers to that question, that it's really hard to be precise. We thought at one point we would be able to bring this to a fairly quick bid, and we have. RGM has begun to get some bid numbers on the major components, such as the fabric and such as the turf, so we're getting a better idea about what the replacement cost is gonna be. We've been to the watershed district, and we had to seek a permit for a pretty significant upgrade of the parking lot and the stormwater management on that site, you know, so instead of just cutting a new water line into the thing, we're gonna build about a $350,000 parking lot, stormwater retention basin, et cetera, because the watershed district told us we had to. So those were some of the costs for this, that, again, because it's a change in the regulatory impact caused by another level of government, we're trying to get that covered by our insurance coverage as well. But we're gonna have a significant cash contribution we're gonna have to make to this, and we want to be able to present to you with your options, in terms of how much is that gonna cost, is there a way to phase it, do you wanna replace it based on how much the cost is gonna be? We're gonna, we wanna have that fairly fine-tuned for you, and that's where the building permit comes in. As we're building that budget, we want to be able to pin down that number to tell you what it's gonna be or not gonna be. Okay. Mayor, I have a follow-up to that, is, because the, I know the EEC sent a memo about energy efficiency, is that type of analysis being worked into the project bids? Yes, it is. Okay. In fact, we have, it was, their proposal was included as an ad alternate to the contract, so we have a bid on it. Okay. And we're doing some analysis, staff is, on what is the ROI on that cost, because it adds about 70,000, is that about somewhere between 70 and 90,000 dollars to the cost of the fabric, but of course, there's an ROI on the, on the energy savings that that affords us to. My other question is, if we, so we have cash in, and then we pursue litigation against those potentially liable, do we get to recover that, or is that subrogated to the insurance company? Do they take those proceeds? I've had a discussion with the legal counsel that travelers has hired to do the subrogation for them, and he has invited us to be a part of his action, and attribute our, add our costs into his, his action. Thank you.
Yep, Member Swenson?
Am I gonna assume that we're this far out anyway, that this dome is not gonna be built before we're out hitting on grass at Braemar anyway, so it, at this point, instead of trying to rush it, it would be best to work it completely, to know exactly what we can get out of it and what we can't, other than potentially going to court?
Well, that brings, that brings to the fore, a whole question that we've been discussing lately, is doing this as a winter project adds somewhere between 30 and 50,000 dollars, just in winter construction costs of the project. If that means that we get the project completed, so that it's ready to open and operate in April, was that 50,000 dollars well spent or not? You know, I think that, that's another element of this that we wanna present to you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, and that's kind of what I was hearing, even though the golf community, including my husband, has been sort of on our case about, when is it going to open, and I get the mayor's question all the time, when is it gonna open, but I also hear this other side of it.
Yeah, good question. Mr. Knutson, with respect to what the watershed is requiring in a circumstance like this, where you have a loss, we'll call it accidental for now, I don't think it was intentional, but I mean, whether there's negligence involved or not, has yet to be determined in the subrogation case, but what are, what are the rights of the watershed district to impose conditions upon us in this circumstance, that they would otherwise not have been able to impose on us, had the building not burned down?
The conditions are imposed because we're building a new building, and that's what gives it rise to their authority to impose requirements on us.
There's no distinction between, there's no distinction between the type of loss that we had in constructing a replacement building, and if we were gonna construct a new building on that site?
I've not reviewed their rules, but that's normally, it doesn't matter why it's a new building, it's just a new building. Whether it burned down, you tore it down, you now have a new building, new structure.
I trust we'll take a look at that issue, too.
So it's no longer, that's like with a non-conforming structure, once it's destroyed, then the new code applies? They have a threshold, and we're about, when does a project require stormwater mitigation? We trip that, because we're moving 50 cubic yards of dirt, right, so, and in this case, it might be just the volume of dirt that is dug up by the backhoe that's installing the new water line into the thing, so that we can have water cannons inside the golf dome. It's also caused by the fact that one of the structural problems that the city lived with for a long time, there was the actual connection of the building to the dome itself, we're remedying that in the new design, that requires additional footing, which requires some excavation, and that trips that same threshold. So they didn't have any sympathy for the cause of why we were there. Are there, is there any methods, pervious pavement, bio-swell things, that mitigate the hard infrastructure costs for stormwater, or is it, that system is the only thing you can use? It's a, it's an intricate system that we'll show you when we demo the whole design for you, but it involves catching, catching stormwater off of the parking lot, storing it in underground tanks under the parking lot, and then slow release of it as it settles out. Is that like, kinda like a target system, where they have the perforated pipes underneath yours? Yeah, yeah. Okay, okay.
All right, I'll move 4L.
Second.
Moved in second, we adopt the revised RGM Construction Management Services contract for the Braemar Golf Dome. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And we are now going to the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda, and I see Kathy Iverson. In the audience, we have a proclamation involving Prevention Works Campaign, and I will read that proclamation now, and invite Ms. Iverson to come forward. Whereas over half a million Americans will die this year from alcohol, tobacco, and other drug-related causes, and whereas every person in the state of Minnesota is affected by alcohol, tobacco, and other drug abuse, and whereas the human and economic costs associated with alcohol use is an estimated $4.5 billion, which amounts to more than $900 per person in Minnesota, and whereas each year smoking costs Minnesota $1.98 billion, and healthcare costs, which amounts to $393 per person in the state, and whereas prevention and treatment efforts have made major gains in reversing the trend toward more and more alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use in our communities, and whereas alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use are major factors in fires, drownings, rape, and other crimes, school failure, child abuse, injury, disease, violence, and lost productivity, and whereas fetal alcohol spectrum disorders are the leading cause of mental retardation in the... in the United States, yet these disorders are 100% preventable, and whereas business, government, law enforcement, schools, religious institutions, service organizations, neighborhoods, youth, senior citizens, and other individuals are encouraged to demonstrate their commitment to help reduce and prevent alcohol, tobacco, and other drug abuse by wearing and/or displaying the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Red Ribbon during the Prevention Works Campaign. Therefore, be resolved that the weeks of November 18, 2012, through January 2, 2013, be declared the Prevention Works Campaign throughout the City VDINA. Be it further resolved that the council members of the City VDINA support the activities of Prevention Works Campaign and the work of the Local Substance Abuse Coalition, Edyna Chemical Health Partners, and encourages the citizens of the City VDINA to participate in the Prevention Works Campaign activities and other alcohol and drug abuse prevention efforts year-round. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, we adopt the proclamation for Prevention Works Campaign. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those say nay. Carrie? Kathy, come on forward, I'm going to hand you this proclamation that I've signed, and then I know you will have a few comments for the community.
Thank you very much.
And I see you have some ribbons in your hand, or at least one, people can see.
I'm Kathy Iverson, and the Edyna Chemical Health Partners Substance Abuse Coalition is an organization in our community that has been around since 1994. Honorable Mayor and council members, I want to thank you for your support of this year's Prevention Works Campaign. During this campaign, Edyna Chemical Health Partners will distribute the red ribbons from MAD. They will be going into the city libraries, the City VDINA buildings, and 17 participating medical clinics. The ribbons are a reminder to be safe and sober when driving, and to promote healthy holiday festivities. We encourage citizens to take a ribbon, tie it on your car antenna, your purse, or your workstation, to show others that you care about safe and sober driving. And we urge everyone to be a friend first and a host second. Provide alternatives to alcoholic drinks, and encourage designated drivers by providing a small gift to those guests who are willing to be the designated driver. Consider calling a cab if you're concerned about anyone who's clearly had too much to drink. I'd like to also point out other ongoing prevention activities that are supported by Edyna Chemical Health Partners. This includes the Together We Stand Campaign. The key campaign slogan is, "Who stands between kids and alcohol? We do." There are T-shirts, a public service announcement, and tools to support parents of teens, including a new DVD curriculum that families can use at home, and it's called Strengthening Families Program. We also want to remind citizens of the new drop-off box for expired or unused prescription and non-prescription drugs that is now in the lobby of the Southdale Edyna Library. This drop-off box is sponsored by Hennepin County. Now we all have a way to get rid of drugs from our homes to keep our community safe. Together, we can all take steps to promote a healthy community, and we can positively say that prevention works. Have a wonderful holiday season. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy?
I do, Mayor. Just, we got this wonderful guide in our packet, Raising Drug-Free Kids, Advice by Age. Is this available online?
It is through Tri-City Partners, and I can forward that information to Jennifer, and then she can make it available on our city website.
That would be great, to get all three constituents. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. We are next going to move to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We only have one public hearing matter tonight. Director Teague has this matter, and it involves a request for a drive-through coffee facility down at 7510 France Avenue. Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This property is located on the west side of Centennial Lakes Park, east of France. It's just south of the new Whole Foods store located right here. What the applicant is proposing this evening is to construct a 1,700-square-foot Starbucks coffee shop. It would be located in the parking lot for Old Navy, this general location here. This is a rendering of what the building would look like. It would be brick with the limestone to match the Whole Foods, be brick on all four sides. Another look at the elevation. The building would include a drive-through on the west side of the building. Here's France Avenue here. This is the entrance road into the site. You see the driveline would wind around this location here. There would be an outdoor eating area in the southeast corner of the site, the trash enclosure to the north. There would be two entrances into the building, one located here off the parking lot, and a secondary entrance on the south side of the building where access could be gained off of the sidewalk along France, this location here. The, as you note here on the stacking space, there is enough room for 13 cars to be, to be stacked, well within our code requirement. When this was reviewed by the Planning Commission, a couple of months ago, this was the orientation of the building. This is France Avenue over here and the entrance. Initially, they were providing five stacking spaces, which actually meets our city code, but as part of the parking study or traffic study that was done by WSB, there was concern in regard to the stacking space. They had recommended up to 11 stacking spaces would be needed. So in order to accommodate that, the cars would stack into the parking lot and would block parking spaces. So rather than bring that forward to the city council, the applicant has revised the plan to the configuration that's before you this evening. And as you can see, it would not interfere with any of the onsite circulation. WSB did do a traffic study. Tony Heppelman is here this evening from WSB to answer any questions that you might have in regard to the stacking or traffic. The study did conclude that the proposed coffee shop here wouldn't have any negative impacts on the roadways. Based on the required parking spaces, with this configuration, there would be 61 parking stalls removed from the site as a result of the coffee shop. The previous plan that we looked at, 43 stalls would be removed. Overall, for the entire shop here, 705 parking stalls are required, and the existing site has 840 today. Part of the reason for the, the overage for parking is that this is used as a parking lot for Centennial Lakes Park. When Centennial Lakes developed back in the late 80s, there was an easement put over all retail and our office sites, where you could park within any of those areas in order to access the site. So there's plenty of parking here, but as these sites redevelop, we want to, may want to keep that in mind, make sure there's adequate parking for our park. The proposal meets all the minimum zoning ordinance requirements in terms of setback, landscaping. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and it was recommended for approval on a five-to-two vote. Those that were against the project had some concern with, in regard to the stacking lane, particularly how it is located in between the building and the sidewalk. They felt that it conflicted with some of our policies in the comprehensive plan. But it was recommended for approval, again, on the five-to-two vote. One of the conditions that I want to note, that the Planning Commission added, to give you a little background, you recall the sidewalk that's located along France Avenue was recently built by the applicant as part of the Whole Foods project, a little over a year ago. It's five feet in width, and with the new, the France Avenue pedestrian study that was done, we're recommending eight feet for the width now. So the initial recommendation was to expand that recently constructed parking, or sidewalk, to eight feet. The Planning Commission is recommending an alternative to that, stating that if the property to the north and to the south were to develop its sidewalk, that the property owner here would have to make that expansion, or within 10 years, whichever comes first. So with that, staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the staff report.
Questions for Director Teague, Member Bennett?
I will defer to Member Swenson and then ask my questions.
Thank you.
You know, you talked a little bit about parking for this whole complex, and that the parking in the lower level qualifies as the parking for the upper. But, you know, other than maybe Chuck E. Cheese, you wouldn't park in the lower level and then go up the stairs to shop Old Navy. So for instance, if Old Navy is something that needs more parking space, we've now created an issue for parking right by it, and where we have people parking in other areas of the lot and trying to walk through what's a fairly busy drive aisle. So I have some concerns with that. The other thing I have some concerns of is that what happens if, you said it stacks 13 cars? What happens if 13 is not enough because it backs out right into the main drive aisle?
It would. That was part of the issue that we looked at, if I could go back to the...
And I practically need a magnifying glass for this plan that was in my packet, so could I complain about that, too, please?
Sorry about that. In all likelihood, the cars would stack out into this area here.
And one would think that's all likelihood, but having experienced the drive-through at the Starbucks right by the Eden Avenue Grill, they don't just very nicely turn around the corner and stack up the street. They have people waiting, coming the other way, trying to turn in, and it causes an inability sometimes to even get through there. Now, granted, it may only be for the 30 minutes after the OLG Kid drop-off, which is one of their primary stacking times, but they have some other times during the day that they go out into the street. So that's my concern, is are we setting ourselves up for a repeat of what we already have up in that Grandview area?
Yeah, hopefully not. Should that occur here where we do have some problems, we would likely go out and try to come up with some kind of a solution.
Well, would we put in something similar to what we call a proof of parking, but maybe this is a proof of stacking?
A proof of stacking agreement?
I mean, we do it for parking, if we're concerned about it, and often we never have to call it in. I don't know if there's anything that makes sense for this, but I have that concern, I have the stacking concern and going out in the main drive aisle, and I have the concern of what if Old Navy or whatever replaces Old Navy someday, needs a lot more parking contiguous to it, and there, it really isn't because we've plopped a coffee shop in the middle of the parking lot. And I don't want to borrow parking from over, up above Whole Foods, because if you look, Whole Foods pretty much parks the whole lot right now.
Right, yeah. I might suggest with the proof of stacking, that, that if that's the route that the council would like, that maybe we, we come back with a solution of, I guess I'd rather work that out now rather than in the future. Should there be a problem, I'd like to know the solution upfront.
I might be the only one with that concern. I'm just speaking now, and I know Member Bennett wanted to say something, so, and we haven't heard from the proponent yet, but go ahead.
Director Teague, what is the number of feet between the outer edge of the drive aisle, in other words, the pickup place in the drive-through, and the curb line?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to take a scale to the plan.
It looks like on this one, 37, no?
One council member who doesn't need reading glasses.
That says 37, where that, where that pointer is, that's a 36.7 right there down below.
Okay.
But that might be, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's the building setback to the lot line, and whether this is the actual curb, I'm not sure, but I don't know what that distance is.
My concern specifically is that if this is approved, and if it's approved with the condition that the Planning Commission recommended, that the sidewalk be allowed to continue in its existing configuration today, but that long-term, the goal be the consistent eight-foot boulevard and eight-foot sidewalk that we're going to try to build the entire length of France, that there be sufficient room to build that and still have enough room for a buffer between the eastern edge of the sidewalk and the drive aisle.
It looks as though there would be room to put the additional three feet on the east side of the sidewalk to not get closer to the curb, so it would, it could come in in, in this location.
So that measurement, again, was...
An additional three feet onto the...
Looks like 36.7.
Okay, thank you.
Right, right above it, though, is the measurement to the outside, looks like to the outside line, that looks like 24.4 to me.
Yeah, that's correct.
From the, from the outside of the drive aisle, west side of the drive aisle to the...
So 24.4.
To, to the, just short of the curb line.
So eight-foot boulevard, eight-foot sidewalk is 16, that leaves about an additional eight feet. So there's still, it does appear to be sufficient width to accommodate those three things. Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor.
Member Swenson.
Was this ever proposed as a non-drive-through, or did it always come forward as, you know, just a standalone location, or did it always?
It's always had the drive-through.
The drive-through component. Okay.
Would anyone on council like to hear from WSB?
For traffic?
Yeah, for traffic, before we, and...
I do have one other question.
Sure, go ahead.
Director Teague, that is, the parking requirement numbers that were given, my question was whether the number of spaces that were available were before the 60-plus were removed, if this is approved and constructed or after. So finding that page in the report, but if you could clarify that, please.
Yeah, the 840 that are proposed includes the 61 that are removed, and the addition, the additional six or seven that are constructed in front of the building.
So again, the 840, I found this on page two of the staff report to the Planning Commission. 705 parking stalls are required. Existing site provides 840 parking stalls, and your response is that that 840 is after the 60 are removed?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good, thanks. Welcome. Would you please give us your name and address?
My name is Tony Heppelman. I'm with WSB and Associates, and as Carrie said, we were engaged to complete a traffic study for the site and take a look at the potential traffic impacts associated with the proposed Starbucks. And we did take a look at quite a few of the intersections on France Avenue, 76th Street, Park Lawn, and the site entrance, and then the Plaza Drive driveways into the site. And we had existing counts conducted at all of those intersections, and did a level-of-service analysis of all of those intersections before the Starbucks, and then we estimated the additional traffic that the Starbucks would add to that site. The trip generation was based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. It's a manual that is kept up by traffic engineers based on surveys of different types of land uses, and they compile those and keep statistics on all of them, and it's a good source for estimating trip generation for similar land uses, and they do have a category of coffee shops with quite a few surveys in it. That was the basis for this. This site, we are estimating would generate about 78 trips in the PM peak hour on a typical weekday, when you have the heaviest traffic on the adjacent streets. And then the real peak for the coffee shop is actually on a Saturday, where I believe the estimate was 178 vehicles that it would generate on a Saturday. Of course, the traffic on the side streets is much less during that time period. In looking at the before and after conditions, the levels of service at all of those intersections changes very little with the proposed improvement. The biggest change is about three seconds of vehicle delay at any of those intersections, which really would be not noticeable by traffic at those intersections. The levels of service, which is kind of a measure of how much delay is there, it's measured from A to E. D is normally considered acceptable, but the measures at all of these intersections is at an acceptable level, and it doesn't change. So generally, the site will not really cause any traffic impacts. Carrie mentioned the queuing analysis. We did have surveys from other studies. The average queue that was identified in those studies was 11 vehicles, but the max queue was just over 13. Now, when they do those... Now, when they do those studies, they don't necessarily always catch all the max because they're not there all the time. And as Councilmember Swenson, sometimes you have special events and stuff that create queue situations that might not show up as part of those surveys. So, that's really the traffic. And again, we do not anticipate any issues relative to the additional traffic that this site would generate. So, council or mayor, council members, if you have any questions?
Other questions for Mr. Appleman at this point in time? I think that was helpful. With respect to the queuing issue that Member Swenson expressed concern over, the fact that they've now redrawn this site plan to accommodate 13 vehicles, is that, in your professional opinion, an adequate number of spaces for the queuing?
In our opinion, it would meet what we would think would be kind of the worst case. Now, again, I'd say that it is possible that there'd be situations where it could, something, some event or something could happen where you have additional need. It's not going to occur very often, maybe not at all, but it could occur. And I certainly think it does sound reasonable to look at what you would do in that situation if it had extend out back into that drive aisle. As Mr. Teague mentioned, it does seem like there is a way to make sure that perhaps a sign or something else, if it does occur, to get them to stack in the entranceway coming into the Starbucks there and make sure that they're not backing out into the entry.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Appleman. All right, we're going to bring the proponent forward. I don't see... Oh, all right. Thank you. And why don't you take 10 minutes to tell us about the project?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Hovland, and members of the city council and city staff, and those here in the chamber tonight and those watching at home. My name is Bruce Carlson. I'm project director with Mid-America Real Estate. I'm owner's representative for the Centennial Lake Shopping Center. Some of you may remember me as developing and bringing through council the Whole Foods grocery store. So, I worked on that a couple of years ago and followed that all the way through construction. And if you remember at that time, the shopping center was, I'm going to use the word, in a dismal state. We were looking at being half vacant or more so, Lost Ultimate Electronics, and we had the furniture store and storables vacating and McDonald's leaving. And so, we were in quite a predicament since then. So, we have really an exciting story, I think, to tell as we were fortunate enough to attract Whole Foods to the development, and with that brought Jason's Deli into the McDonald's space. We've also been able to attract Ideal Image, a brand-new Subway store, which is fantastic inside, a new haircuttery, and then 25,000-square-foot Home Goods is under construction right now, backfilling the Ultimate Electronics space. So, we're very excited about what's happening, and I think having the interest with Starbucks is just another indication of the success of the center. And we really look to the longevity of that center now as we look to the future here. When we first came before the work session and the Planning Commission and then went to the Planning Commission, we were really, we had the building turned perpendicular to France Avenue to really open up view corridors for the tenants behind. In our mind, you know, parking wasn't an issue. Turning the, but the stacking just didn't work well, as you saw, and so turning the building parallel created some issues for view corridors for tenants, but we brought it to the tenants, brought it to the property management group, and they agreed to move forward and support now what you see here and are really excited about it. I wanted to talk first, I have a couple images I want to show and move over, so I don't know if I should take a microphone now. And what we did was look at the use of the shopping center, the overall use. And one thing that we were very excited about having a coffee use here is just because of the time of day when they are active. Oh, okay. Get rid of this clip. I don't need this. Okay. This is a recent aerial photo taken by Google Earth. As you can see, the Whole Foods is already in place. This was taken on April 4th. And as you can see, the shadows are very short. It doesn't give a time of day, but we can see that Jason's Deli is very busy, and also Cucumbers up here, the restaurant, is very busy. And some customers are at Old Navy, and right here where I'm pointing to is the area for the Starbucks. I'll show a little close-up of that. And again, you can see that this is an area of little or no activity midday. Since Starbucks is busy in the morning as their prime time, I went out to the site on a few different days to, again, show the activity. Here's a picture of October 9th at 8:56 in the morning, past prime time. Here is October 15th at 9:26. And then I was out here just on Monday near 10 o'clock, and this is actually my pickup truck in where the drive-through is to be located. As you can see, there are no cars and no activity in this area, hence why ownership group and property management and tenants would like to see this particular use of all uses that we could think of coming here. It really just works so well for that area. Here again is the boulevard and the five-foot sidewalk that we talked about. I took this one even later at 11:20 in the morning to show the activity that is there. We are really excited about bringing the shopping center forward to France Avenue and having it very close to France Avenue. And part of what we talked about with Planning Commission and city staff, you know, with this parking issue, is one of the things that we're trying to do is increase pedestrian, bicycle use, and minimize parking, you know? And so, rather than adding more and more parking spaces, this is a better, more efficient use of the land there, and actually encourages pedestrian use, encourages bicycles like we do at Whole Foods. Whole Foods has an outdoor patio. This, too, also has an outdoor patio. I think that the issue of the stacking all the way into the central entrance, I think for property management, they don't want that. Nobody wants that. And we could address that in a couple ways. One would be if it became a problem, you could actually have yellow stripes on the drive aisles that are crosshatched, no parking or stopping in this area, and also signage. Now, we don't want to go overboard with signs. We've got nice landscaping out there, but we would be in support of adding that if So, those would be my immediate comments if you have any questions.
Member Swenson.
How many Starbucks, other than the other one we have in our city that has a drive-through, have a drive-through that you've visited or know about?
I failed to mention who's with me here tonight. With me here tonight is, so I'll take a second to do that, Kathy Anderson, our architect with Architectural Consortium, also our civil engineer, Dan Parks with Westwood Professional Engineers. And I also have a representative from Starbucks here this evening. Laura Lambrecht is her name. She came in from Chicago, and she's the one that helped select the site. So, we could have her come up and talk to that.
I'll hold that question until she comes up because I have a couple more for you first.
Okay.
So, now that you have filled Home Goods, the Ultimate site, or will have filled it, how many square feet do you have empty and where is it?
We have vacant, I don't have that exact number for you.
Approximately.
We have vacancies on the lower level.
Okay.
So, I have quite a bit of vacancy. I would say we would probably be in the 10% to 15% range, maybe 20. I'm not sure.
Okay, and most of that is in your lower level. What do you still have vacant in the upper level? Specifically on the side that Old Navy and Jason's Deli and around to Chuck E. Cheese...
There are none right now.
There are none, okay. So, you don't have another location to put this internally?
Correct. And the reason that this is here is for a drive-through. We went over this at Planning Commission, but there is a demand for a drive-through. The Galleria site does not have a drive-through. There's a, you know, non-spoken-of drive-through as people pull up in the circle area, run in and get it. So, I don't really know how you stop that from happening. I think what this will do is relieve pressure in Edina. Some people, you know, talk show hosts, late-night talk show hosts, you know, sometimes make jokes about there's so many Starbucks out there, but there's so many Starbucks out there because they're successful and people like them, and this will help take pressure off the other ones in the city.
No, I don't doubt that, and that area of town could use one, and I happen to own a Starbucks Gold Card, so I know where most of them are, actually. I'm just curious about, you know, your space and the ability to park, because if I look at your pictures, there wasn't one Saturday busy, there's a sale at Old Navy, and where are they all going to park? And so, you have about 20-some places right in front that are shared between the coffee shop and Old Navy to park, and then you have a major drive aisle, which is kind of the cut-through to get to a lot of places.
No, no.
It is. I'm sorry, you may not want it to be the cut-through, but it is, and...
I think that, to address that, I think that that is really, I've spent a lot of time out here, that's really stopped from happening because it's so serendipitous and circuitous to get through here. It's almost, it's just easier to do it from that way.
Well, then, I'm one of your primary offenders, so...
I saw you then, okay.
Yeah, thank you. But I have a concern with the parking in front of a store like Old Navy, that's a moderately successful store there, and when they're busy and when there are coffee patrons, and where are we asking people to park, say, to keep Old Navy successful, which is more your job than my job? But my job isn't to set up a situation that causes, that is going to cause issues just from the get-go. So, that's the direction I'm asking you.
Right. There's only one entity more worried about the success of Old Navy, and that's Old Navy.
Right.
They want success. And I can't speak for Old Navy, and we don't have them here to talk, but we've had talks with them, and they support this. This helps their business, and it's so complimentary. It would be worse if we brought in another user that was busy during the times when Old Navy is busy. So, Starbucks' peak time is not during noon. It's not in the afternoon. That's less time. Starbucks' peak time is in the morning as it is. And so, they encourage it. This is going to help Old Navy, because as you can see right now, even if they had 10 more cars, it's just a potential 10 more sales for Old Navy. And sometimes, as you know, Starbucks actually goes inside of stores, you know, as well. And so, this, we feel, as experts in the shopping center industry and having relationships with the tenants there, is going to help them. And if you remember, we did have a drive-through right here, which we took down.
I know.
And so, this is in a much better position and a much better placement and a much improved than the drive-through that we had. So, we tore that one down, which makes way for this one.
Member Swenson.
I just have a follow-up to that. So, let's say Old Navy doesn't stay, though. How does this affect your tenant mix, your tenant selection process in the future? I mean, because your parking requirements are going to be dictating the type of tenant.
You know, that's purely conjecture. You try to be, you know, as smart as you can about something like that. First of all, we do not want Old Navy to leave, okay? So, if they're watching this...
Right.
We don't plan for Old Navy to leave. In fact, we feel that we're going to lock them in to a long-term lease here, and they've been a very good tenant for our shopping center and excellent for the city of Edina and this area, and we see nothing but success for them whatsoever. So, you know, it's so hard to predict the future. We just put in a cherry berry yogurt shop. Who could have predicted, you know, 10 years ago that yogurt would be back? So, to try to stand here and predict what would go in here, or who knew Home Goods would take over Ultimate Electronics, or it could be a workout facility wants to go there, it could be a myriad of things, and I just, I guess, can't answer that question.
Let me rephrase a question. For, does the amount of parking left over, the shared parking between Starbucks and that tenant, concern you for restricting the type of future tenants that could go in there?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Bennett.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson, what is planned for the visibility of the pedestrian crossing from the sidewalk to the, across the drive aisle? I note that the drawing shows a clearly marked crosswalk. I know that the drawing depicts a stop sign, and I know that there was a question about that at the Planning Commission. Will there be any monumentation or anything else that sort of draws the driver's eye after they've just picked up their beverage?
As you can see, here is the crosswalk area, and then there is the stop sign. Oh, and our civil engineer just reminded me, it's a typical state-standard crosswalk sign as well. So, they will be paused right here, and so I don't even think they can get up under too much speed any different than anywhere else in the entire shopping center, so...
You may consider the addition of a stop line. I know that it's a real belt-and-suspenders approach, but a stop line in advance of a stop sign will keep people far enough back that if someone, for instance, is crossing with a small child, holding hands, that the driver will just have that much more visibility.
I mean, we could even, I've seen where it's, actually the word "stop" is painted right in the drive aisle as well. So, we could, I mean, we're all for that. That's fine.
I would be favorably impressed by more, a little bit more visibility with that, understanding that, yeah, there isn't going to be a lot of pickup of speed between the two.
Right. We're fine with that. If you wanted to make that as part of your approval, we would be okay with that.
And then, again, you spoke about two entrances and exits, one for convenient pedestrians who are accessing from the sidewalk.
That's right here.
Okay. And the second, more major entrance.
Is here.
Okay. I heard comments from several of the planning commissioners about windows. Could you show us the elevations again? And I think their concern particularly was with the west elevation. The north elevation also, I remember that there was discussion about that with respect to Whole Foods, and I noticed that as it was being constructed, there were windows added, and they've been really quite wonderful. So, I'm wondering if there is any similar possibility here, understanding it's a much, much smaller building.
Yeah, if we could zoom out. The first thing I wanted to show is, because the Planning Commission was not, did not have the benefit of seeing this graphic. We've since put it together, because when you look, when you zoom in on the television camera and just look at the Starbucks elevation, just sitting on its own without any scale, it looks like a large wall, which I'll show you that. But the first thing I want to show you and remind those here and those at home, that this Starbucks is only 1,700 square feet. A typical fast-food restaurant is about 3,500 square feet, so it's much less. It's a very small building out here. So, I want to make sure that we keep that in mind, and as you can see, that even this front elevation, it only fits right over here on the side of Whole Foods. The wall that they are talking about here, comparison, is this area right here. Now, we did, we have a, also with landscaping, we added, we added a graphic to show that the landscaping will be continued. And then I'll probably call our architect up, because she starts using words like asymmetrical and design and modern and how things work and how this all ties back to the whole look and feel. We do have to be complimentary to the existing shopping center. So, we've taken what's already there and put it, in fact, we're using all the same materials. We have the same material boards, but I see she's here right now, so I'm going to pass this over to Kathy Anderson.
And I also did note the con... And I also did note the comment to the Planning Commission that you do have to have a certain amount of your building without windows, for instance, your bathrooms.
Sure, I think that's a good point. I think Bruce did a great job when he showed the perspective, scale, coordination between how small this building is compared to Whole Foods. And so, again, as itself, we added the landscaping in, that the Planning Commission did not have the ability to see at their hearing, but I think that does soften this area. This is only about a 40-foot length of wall. This is the back kitchen, back of house and restrooms. You know, on Whole Foods, we did add some spandrels, some fake glass to the side along France, because that was such a longer expanse of wall. In this case, I really feel the proportions of this building, particularly the elevation on France, that this asymmetry, that not just adding some more fake windows to this, this is, I think, a more handsome building. Just having strips of glass almost gets back to a strip mall effect, which I don't think is as interesting. So I think if you look proportionally at this building, it's a very classy style.
What about the north elevation?
The north elevation.
I think, I think turning the, turning the building does work from the stacking perspective. And also frankly, another way that turning the building works is it, is it does increase the presence on France Avenue.
Right.
Which is one of our goals in the comprehensive plan, is to have meetings, buildings come up to the street, have that accessibility viewed by pedestrians. And turning the building gains you that as well as the drive aisle.
Right. And for the north elevation, I think one of, we've placed the trash enclosure up next to the building. We've looked at other alternatives on the site, which I think are very negative impact of having it floating out within the parking, parking lot. So for the convenience of the trash, but more importantly, having it tucked in to the north side of the elevation continues more of that brick. And then we have this larger landscape buffer area that can soften that edge as well. So between the landscape opportunity, the proximity to, you know, to the building, again, further mass along France, I think that'll be an interesting part of the building as well.
And then there's a utility door on the north?
Yep, this is with service door for deliveries and for taking the trash out. So it's, I think it's nice in a food use, you're not having a long distance of schlepping food-type materials across a parking lot.
And what do you plan to use for your service aisle, for, for instance, delivery trucks?
I perceive delivery trucks probably parking, you know, it's more of an urban situation when we put buildings close up to the street. There's not any great way of handling it, but I would see them probably pulling in, and maybe that's more of a question for operations from the person from Starbucks as well. But I think, again, think of this in a downtown-type setting, where you're not just driving all around in a parking lot. You're probably pulling up to this door or pulling up into this area.
How many indoor seats do you have?
I'd have to refer to the Starbucks representative for that.
We're on landscaping, talking about, I, I, the landscaping on the north obviously is much more colorful and, and varied than the Carl Forrester and the Techni Arborevidi. Are there options to enhance the landscaping on that, on that side, on that western elevation? Second question is, is, is there an opportunity to provide some type of landscaping between the sidewalk and the drive aisle of cars to somehow soften its effect? Because under the comprehensive plan, the, the ideal situation would be to make this more pedestrian-connected. Having a drive aisle between the shop and the sidewalk is not, is not, does not fit that ideal. So run me through some ideas for softening the drive aisle, and then also softening that wall in a, in a more colorful, varied way.
Okay, here is the wall that you're speaking of. We do have the variety of landscaping. We think it's important that it would be, remain low so that it's forming in the base, and it would not block the signage. A little history, if you remember back for the Whole Foods approvals, there was a lot of trees that we had all decided that were to be removed because of visibility and issues that was really blocking the leasability of the rest of the center. And so this landscaping plan that you're seeing, proposed for this portion of the site, remains constant all along France Avenue with what we did at Whole Foods. Now, the area in here that you're speaking of by the drive aisle, one, I think we'd want to make sure that we'd leave room to expand the sidewalk, the eight feet. You know, we do have the 24-plus feet to play with here, but I think if it was low landscaping, I think some could be added in there if you felt that would enhance that sidewalk experience.
And in terms of flexibility on the landscaping that's on the west side of the building, is there any?
Is...
What I'm, what I'm commenting on is the Carl Forrester and the Techni Arborevidi.
That's this right here.
Being, being a little, a little bland when you look at the northern section and the, the color and the ambiance that that provides. So I'm asking, is there flexibility on perhaps sprucing up, no pun intended, that, that side of the building?
Well, I think the choice of materials and plantings is relatively subjective. This is from our landscape architect that has done the landscaping throughout all of Centennial Lakes, but certainly if your desire is, I'm hearing color, you're liking the color and some of the texture of this area in here, we can certainly go back and see if this portion could reflect that. My guess is where he was coming from is, again, sort of repeating what the France Avenue landscape newly, you know, doesn't look so great in the fall right now, but it is more green, of course, in the spring and the summer. So I think he was repeating a France Avenue theme that's been established. But certainly, you know, if, if everyone agrees, we'd rather see more color, different types of plantings here, we can go back and... Yes?
You said, you talked about being able to walk here and bike here, but what I see is the only way to get here safely without going across a parking lot is to go out to a sidewalk on France. So if I'm at Cucumbers or if I'm at the new Home Goods, the only safe way for me really to get here is to come by car, correct?
Yes, this is the connection through...
Because otherwise, I'm crossing parking lots. There aren't any walkways, there aren't any pedestrian areas in the internals of either of these two sides, correct?
One thing that I want to say is that we're dealing with a shopping center that was built in 1988, and, and...
I'm quoting you.
Yes. And, well, what I want to say, that it's not perfect. It's, it doesn't have, you know, connections from everywhere to, to get here, but it's such a big improvement right now over what we have. And, and, I mean, someone could be here and have to get from here to here, and they're going to have to go through, they might choose to go through a parking lot, they could make their way all the way through, and we've got crosswalks, and so we have this all set up. This probably was not the, right now, we don't have a sidewalk right from here to here on it. But there's certainly a well-marked trail, and, and I think it's a, it's a great improvement.
No, I was just, you were kind of talking about pedestrian and bikes, so I just really had to say I only really see one area that is a safe pedestrian entrance, that's all.
Because in any shopping center, you know, what we encourage for the safest pedestrian routes through a shopping center of multiple buildings is to walk along the storefronts, and that's what you're seeing in a loop system like this, is, again, we encourage them to do their shopping around, and then from, you know, from outer reaches, if you're coming on your bike or walking, everyone agrees it's a great addition that this is one stretch of France that has sidewalk along it.
Sure. You have an amazing number of people right now coming to Whole Foods from the office buildings, and they come along Centennial, the Centennial Lakes walkway to go to Whole Foods to get takeout at lunch and go back. And I stood one day, and I was sitting, talking to a friend, and I was counting the people coming by and then carrying their little bag back, and I was amazed, which was great. They're walking to get food. I thought that was kind of healthy, going to Whole Foods. So, you know, I don't want to create something that takes away from that improved walking of the neighboring office buildings and then maybe shopping in your stores otherwise, so...
And if you watch, excuse me, if you watched the Planning Commission meeting, I did bring up the fact that we'd like to have a bus stop somewhere here currently. Currently, we're the only property with a sidewalk right now. The, the property to the south and to the north do not have sidewalks, and currently the bus cuts across and gets in the left-hand lane and goes up and turns on Park Lawn as well, so...
All right, you want to put your site plan back up? I'll have a few questions as well. That's good. That's all right. Here, here's one thing that, I don't know if it worries me, bothers me, but Kathy, maybe you can talk a little bit about why, you know, we, you know how, as a city, we're trying to engage the street in a more effective way. Why you didn't use this site to try to figure out a way to put the dining on the west side and have the cars kind of swoop in on the, the way you've got them and work up, work up the inside so that you don't have a, you don't have a sitting area looking in a parking area, but you've got it out next to the sidewalk, which would bring people in, and it keeps people from having to cross over a walkway. And you got your drive-through on the right side, and people, and you haven't disengaged yourself from the street, which is what I feel like you've done. It's, it's a, it's a bit of the, a variation of the problem that we got down at Centennial Lake shops, where they've turned their back on France Avenue. You're kind of turning your back on France Avenue with a, with a drive-through.
I think, to answer that...
So, so talk to me a little bit about why you did it the way you did, because it seems to me like there's a way to, to escape the problem by coming in, reversing the drive aisle in. You come in where your arrow points out into the parking lot down the lower right-hand corner, lower, and you come in, yeah, you, you come in there and you come up the east side, and then you go back out the upper right-hand corner of that site, of that lot.
I think the fundamental problem with America is the way our cars are designed, and unless we were in England, the driver's side relationship to the pickup window dictates everything. And so the downside...
So then, why can't you swoop in from the, that's, I mean, that's a, that's a very good point. Why can't you swoop in from the upper right-hand corner and come down, oh, you're still on the passenger side?
Now, your way got them on the drive side if you had the main entrance as your, as your window, pickup window. The dilemma is, if you have the entrance on France Avenue, and we've noodled with this quite a bit for quite a few months here, we would have to have parking then along France Avenue. So to me, I think as part of your vision for France in the future, the more urban-type experience is getting the buildings as close to France, you know, the mass as close to France as possible. I think the other plus is at least this end of the building, the side of the building internally is the dining area, and so there is going to be a relationship to France when you're inside the Starbucks. And again, we are being very conscious...
But maybe inside, but when you're coming down the street, the, the west elevation of your building totally disengages France Avenue. All you see when you look over to the east is a drive-through window.
Well, no, you have windows of dining windows. Right here.
Well, you're not, you're not going to see much of that because of the cars that are going to be queued up and coming and going, I don't think, but...
Right, they're stacked from here on back, so I do think at least the building design does have that relationship to France, and we are being very careful. One thing, the question about parking in general for the future leasability of Old Navy, we didn't want to take any more parking...
Where's your, where's your parking on-site now?
Parking on-site?
Yeah. Right, those, where you got six...
There's parking here, and then there's shared parking throughout.
Yeah, so you got like, what, six spots there?
Right, but to lose any more in this direction, to get the patio here, I think would be a detriment for leasing of the Old Navy. We are at the parking ratio four per thousand in that area, which is, by industry standards, if we were designing a new shopping center, that is for this type of use, other than, you know, a grocer where you'd have a higher ratio. So I think we are right on, and, you know, our team of leasing agents and experts in retail, we are comfortable with that parking ratio.
I, I let you talk me out of what I was talking about originally, about you making me think that we were on the wrong side of the car. You're not. If you come in the lower right-hand corner and you swoop to the north, I'm on the driver's side, right there.
Yeah, you're saying that you want the pickup window right here.
Well, I'm asking, why can't the pickup window be there, and you move the whole thing further east so that you can put the patio on the left, on the street side, and you get all the windows on the west side, and you get the drive-through internally on the parking lot on the east side, so that people, you, you've done exactly what we want people to do, and that's engage the street.
Right.
And you go out the upper right-hand corner.
I totally, I think I understand what you're saying, without designing this on the spot, but I, we went through that exercise back at the office, and what happens, you get that same problem, is that we start stacking in front of Old Navy, and so the whole, the whole, that's why we, we had ourselves over here, we were trying to, you know, get away from stacking up into this parking area, and the only outlet was here. So it's a, it's a Rubik's Cube. It's definitely, I agree, it's a Rubik's Cube, and in this particular, if you're looking for this facility to solve every issue that you have, we can't do it. But I think that it's, and I'll let, I'll let you talk, give me a second. I think that it's such a good design...
Going north.
And, and are you saying that I don't have it right, that I'm thinking...
No, I'm saying that you could, to me, the queuing's about a toss-up. If you come in that, you ever see where the arrow points into the parking lot down the lower right-hand corner? Lower, other corner.
Here?
No, other corner, right there. You come in, you come in there, and you, maybe you move the building further north, but you come in and you hit the drive, and you go out the upper right-hand corner.
But then I don't know how you put the menu board and the, I still don't think you have enough stacking, because you have to stop an order and then move forward to the pickup window. And I think then you're back into that situation where we're stacking out into this area.
I think the other issue with that, if you're trying to get the, the window on this side, the negative is the ability to have safe parking up against the building so it's safer pedestrians to cross, and that is important for a retailer like this. We wouldn't want to break and have people crossing a drive aisle. So that head-in parking is important.
I'm not so concerned about that, but Member Bennett, I mean, there's hundreds of people that do that every hour at Target, cross the drive aisle. So, go ahead, Member Bennett.
One other issue, and I think I heard this addressed at the Planning Commission, if you have a business that's chiefly oriented toward mornings, you want your outside dining on the east, because it's going to have sunshine in the morning. If you have it on the west side of your building, it's going to be blocked by your building during the morning. Similarly, you're going to have the hot sun, especially during the warmer months, which is when people tend to be outside, especially on that west side during the summer, spring, summer and fall afternoons. Whereas now, you have natural shade, well, shade from the building, but you're going to have a cool space for the afternoons and warmed by the morning sun. That made sense to me.
That's true.
Yeah, it's, it's a decent point. Okay. I, I have to keep in mind, too, that this is a 1,700-square-foot building.
Very, yeah.
But, but I, you know, and I see the trade-offs that are involved. I just wanted you to talk about it a little bit.
Okay. Some of the questions you had on seating?
So how many inside seats do you have for customers, chairs?
We're working on the preliminary schematic right now, so right now we're showing about 30 to 35 seats. That could change. We're going through the approval process internally right now, working on that.
And of your Starbucks that you build, what percentage of them are drive-through?
Right now, we're looking, every store that we look at, we look to do a drive-through. In Minnesota right now, we have about 55 stores, and about 20 of those are drive-through right now. But going forward, our new development, we're looking to do as many drive-throughs as we can.
Okay, and, you know, we have a, an energy and environment commission that, one of the things that they've actually not been very supportive of are drive-through aisles because of the idling and the gas use and the pollution. Has that ever been a concern?
That's not something we looked at. We try to get people through the drive-through as fast as we can, from the menu board to the pickup windows, about 45 seconds. So we're, that's our, that's our goal.
Obviously, thank you, Mayor. So doing another store in such close proximity to the other one, you obviously have very strong demand in this market. Have you ever considered doing another standalone store in this location with no drive-through?
We have not looked at that, no. We think that with the traffic on France Avenue, a drive-through would be important here.
But that traffic would also give visibility to the store for a, a drive-up customer as well?
It would, it would, but for the convenience to our customer, that's, that's one of our number-one goals these days, is to have convenience for our customers. We think that drive-through adds that convenience.
If it were standalone, you would have, for your model, you would have... If it were standalone, you would have, for your model, you would have ample convenience parking, though, adjacent convenience parking, where there's not a drive-through for your Starbucks model. You'd have adequate adjacent convenience parking, yes?
We haven't looked at that model.
You know, several years ago, didn't you close Starbucks in town here without drive-throughs?
We have in the past, yeah. Mm-hmm.
But not in this market. Galleria's seems to be doing pretty well. I don't know which, what the rankings are with the sales, but it seems to be a pretty busy store all day long.
Ask her out to Devani's, one does.
I just want to stop you here for a second because, just to help her out a little bit, she's in a little bit of a difficult position. I don't think we're going to talk Starbucks out of a drive-through tonight. There's going to be either, you know, we need to have a drive-through or they won't go here. You know, we talked about this at planning commission, too, is that there's a lot of safety and convenience for having a drive-through, so you've got parents with children. So you have to take all your children out, bring them into the store, or leave children in the car. And we've got a lot of cold days, and this is a convenience and an enhancement for a lot of people. And that's why it is successful, and that's why they go to the, you know, the pains to have a drive-through, have it serviced, to have people working the drive-through windows. So they already have a store in Edina without a drive-through. And so I just kind of wanted to, without having put her on the spot, that, you know, they've made a decision to have a drive-through or want a drive-through here. And that's also, I think, for the success of the shopping center, we'd like to see them successful here as well with a drive-through.
Could you put your site plan back up, please? Member Sprague, any other follow-up?
Nope.
What's the dining on the east side? I'm interested in looking at landscaping once again. It seems to me like you ought to be able to do a better job with landscaping, separating the six parking spots from the dining area. And maybe I'm missing something here, but on that, on that line, yeah, the curb line there, it seems like you ought to be able to have some kind of planting beds or something in there that would create a little bit more privacy and intimacy for your outdoor dining, other than just the curb.
Maybe on this end here, a buffer for the driveway. I mean, the parking stall side, you want to be able to walk to the sidewalk.
But I could see at this end, creating a buffer.
It's, we could put a railing there. I mean, a railing seems, or decorative rail seems to work there, or a planter box.
This is, this is potentially your retail operation, but it strikes me that you've done a beautiful job landscaping other places, and now you've got your, you've got your outdoor dining area hanging out in the parking lot. And so I'm going to, I'm going to sit outside, and the only thing separating me from the parking lot is a curb. And there's no landscaping. You could do a beautiful job putting in some stuff there, some landscaping material.
I think there is room.
There's going to be a little bit of room there, but, you know, it is a bit subjective because where some people like an urban feel and like activity and action, some people like to be hidden away in a, in a park and not see anything. So there's that balance between activity and being hidden. So you can go on 50th and France and sit right outside, and there's cars parked, you know, right there, and people slamming their doors and radios and all kinds of things. And there is a little bit of an energy and excitement to all of that. So I don't think that, you know, we want to hide and, and so there could be a case.
I'm not suggesting a six-foot wall of Arbor Vitae. I'm just suggesting a little bit of a low wall of something.
I think there's an opportunity, but I just didn't want to, you know, there's not a lot of opportunity there.
I guess, I don't see it as subjective. I see it as a trade-off. We're doing a building design, potentially, that does not address our comprehensive plan well in terms of the architecture and the pedestrian access to the street. So in a trade-off of that, we're looking at enhancing the landscaping around the site to make it more bucolic and inviting. And as well as potential, you know, sidewalk connections, it seems like, if you can put the site plan up again, seems like another enhancement that would benefit the site plan would be a northerly sidewalk connection up along the entrance to the building, right here. So.
Do you mean across the, across the parking?
Yes, well, up where the purple plantings are.
Up in here?
Yep, that sidewalk segment right there, something right there.
This and over? Are you talking something like that? Because I think, you know, if you're coming from this way, I think this is probably an enhanced, a better way than passing, you know, go along France.
They'll always take a shortcut. I mean, it's always the most direct line. So I think, I think you're making an interesting point.
There is no sidewalk there right now, by the way.
How would somebody walk there from Whole Foods? Put that other.
Yeah, from Whole Foods, you'd come right off the sidewalk here and you'd walk, and then you cross at the crosswalk and then come to the next crosswalk. There is, there is no.
Where your finger is on the left side, other side, yep. Is that a sidewalk right along? No, you just.
Here?
No, go back to the overhead area. So where your finger was at the entrance, on the other side of that entrance, on the northern side, is that a sidewalk right there?
No, it is not. Here's what you're showing.
Okay, I get you.
That's a curb line.
It's a barrier.
Correct. Again, that's that concept of walking around the storefronts and looping around the site.
Well, the entrance into this is interesting because everyone who comes in can go anywhere they want. Anyone pulling out of this side or the lower parking or the Whole Foods parking has to stop and wait because the incoming traffic control that next intersection.
You're talking about right here?
There are three stop signs.
Right.
And the incoming traffic have none.
Yep.
Correct.
It's sort of an interesting.
I think, I think that's to, you have to have a traffic engineer. I think that's to avoid ever having stacking.
It is. I know what it is. But if you've ever kind of driven around there, you got to pay attention if you're trying to cross.
It's a good idea to pay attention, yes.
All right, let's, we're going to have a public hearing here. So we're going to see who else is interested. If you folks want to sit down for a moment, I think we're.
Did we beat this one into submission?
I'm going to open this matter up for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and make an inquiry or a comment regarding this proposed matter? Unless you want to use one of the overheads, I would suggest going to one of the side podiums and give us your name and address, please.
Bob Adderhold, 3529 West 54th Street. I'm here on another matter, but I've been curiously listening to this, and so I just have one question. As I looked at the plan, I'm wondering about bicycle parking. I heard conversation about bicycle accessibility and walking accessibility, and I'm curious if there's any accommodation being made here for bicycle parking.
Yeah, good question. That's one we usually ask, and we forgot to ask it. Thank you, Mr. Adderhold. Just hold off a minute, please. Just hold off. This is the public portion here. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to come forward? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Now you can come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan Parks, Westwood. Just wanted to point out, that's something that Bruce maybe forgot to mention, is that this red line here, okay, sorry, this red line here is actually a bicycle rack that's being proposed. There's also one on the, on the west, in the south and the east side of the Whole Foods project. So this is a bicycle rack that's being proposed. This is actually a railing fence proposed on the south side to provide some security and safety in terms of the differentiation between the seating area and the drive-through. So that is an area that we presently have a bike rack. You know, if there's another place to put that bike rack, if there desire to be some planting or something that can be done, but that is where bikes are being presently proposed.
All right. Thank you. All right, we've got the public hearing closed up. Do we have a motion and a second for discussion purposes?
I will move this matter.
Do you have any interest in adding proof of stacking? Do you have any interest in adding any landscaping changes?
I will be willing to talk about them. I actually like this project.
No, that's fine. I just was curious.
Yeah, I bet I would be willing to talk about some stuff, but I also think, I mean, I think that what they propose has been consistent with what they've done, but would be happy to entertain discussion.
Member Swenson, what are, what are your thoughts on those things? We don't have a second yet, so go ahead and.
Would you rather have a second before we discuss it?
Go ahead. Might make a, well, go ahead and second it, and then we'll have a discussion, and we may.
I'll second it for discussion. One, I think I would rather have the bike parking moved over to the northeast, northeast area of the building so that they would do something similar to what you said, Mayor, and, and just have that a more pleasant experience outside.
Member Swenson, where on the site plan would that be? You said northeast. But where, next to the utility building on the?
No, there's, there's space on their sidewalk area where they park their cars to move it to the, if you're looking at the main door, it would be on the right of the main door, yeah. I, I also think that there could be some enhancements to the landscaping along the sidewalk area. I'm not sure really what's available along the building because there isn't a huge amount of depth of that, that dirt there between the drive aisle as you pull a car up next to the little window.
So, Member Swenson, where is the land? So the bike parking that you are recommending would be shifted to the right of the entrance door?
Yep.
In front of the vehicle parking? Okay, that is the side of the building that doesn't have windows or under, yeah. So that, so against the building?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the landscaping that you're talking about? One thought is that if they're already recommending fence between drive aisle and dining area, you can do window boxes, just as has been done in 50th and France area.
Yeah, I wasn't even looking at that. I was looking at the landscaping that was discussed between the current sidewalk and along the west side of the building.
You want to see heavier landscaping.
I want to see something more interesting. I think, yes, they've been.
Trying to buffer the drive aisle.
Yeah, to buffer the drive aisle. They've been consistent in the landscaping around the Whole Foods and everything. I felt sad when all those trees came down. I know it made a very, a much clearer view of your Whole Foods store and for people to find it, but I kind of liked the aisle of trees that we had going down there that came down.
Mayor, return to landscaping for just a second, because Member Swenson meant, Member Sprague mentioned color. But as a gardener, I know you don't get color consistently through a season unless you do it either with annuals or you do it with shrubs. So are you leaving this to their discretion as to whether they simply want to mix some more colorful, decide you have shrubs for this?
I guess I would use it, leave it to the discretion of our planning director.
Wait a second, they have perennial grass there. Why can't you have perennials on that side?
You can, but they're not going to bloom all season. They're, depending on what you pick, you'll get color for a brief, you can choose a long.
Well, they have Stella, they have Stella Door or Happy Returns on the corner. Those are, so they could extend that through.
With, well.
With, mixed in with something else. I'm just saying a little more variety on that side. Again, my point is, it's a trade-off. I'm trying to make a better, more vibrant aesthetic from the sidewalk since we can't make the building orient itself.
Sure, and as a pretty longtime gardener, I can tell you that, that unless, with perennials, flowering perennials, you're going to get limited bang for your buck with shrub, or thyme. With, there are, however, shrubs that have leaf changes through the season that will provide color, also a little bit more height. There are people who don't have a lot of liking for day lilies because they tend to stay fairly low to the ground and can look fairly messy. But I think given, just giving that direction or putting it as a condition.
Correct.
I'm comfortable with that. I don't think I'm comfortable saying what kind of landscaping.
I'm not comfortable saying that either.
But would you be comfortable leaving some of those grasses? Because I'm thinking that along 70th Street on the roundabouts by Galleria, they look very nicely.
Let's just, let's just put it to add some.
There's some existing grasses there anyway. I'm not asking them to take the existing grass out.
Here's what I've got, is, you know, if you look at the resolution, there's five conditions. We add number six, bicycle rack moved to the northeast corner of the building. And number seven would be landscaping satisfactory to city staff to buffer the drive aisle by the drive-in window and to buffer the outdoor dining area.
And I would say enhanced color along the building on the east, on the west elevation. I don't, as to your point, whether it's a bush or a perennial, I'll leave that up to their discretion. It has to be acceptable.
I was just, that's why I put in that satisfactory to city staff, because I think you've heard enough from us to know what the general direction is, but.
The landscaping would be three locations. It'd be along the, enhanced color along the western elevation, landscaping between the drive aisle and the sidewalk, and then landscaping on the eastern side of the, or around the seating area, let's just say.
And the last condition is the proof of stacking. Since we've had a proof of parking for years, it gives us a certain amount of comfort when we say yes to things like this. If we'd had a proof and stacking for the Starbucks up by Devani's, we would never be sitting with the situation that we are now. And granted, it's only dangerous for small moments of every day, but, you know, if, if you're one of those people and you get hurt up there, it's not a good deal. So Director Teague, do you have a recommendation on how to handle proof of stacking? Since this is a whole new entity, but we may have more requests for drive-ins, it's probably something that we should have in our bag of tricks, as you say.
Yeah, I would see it similar to a proof of parking agreement. We would work with WSB and, and the applicant and come up with some kind of a plan and turn that into a formalized document that gets filed with the property.
Roger, I'm assuming you've never seen a proof of stacking before?
Your assumption is correct.
Hey. Okay, are you comfortable with a proof of stacking, Member Bennett?
I am. I did note that in the planning commission, it was discussed that we really don't have a requirement as to stacking. However, I do understand your concern. I think the configuration is different than here than Grandview, but again, to address that concern.
It is different, but it isn't that, 13 isn't that much more than what we can get at Grandview. We can get at Grandview between nine and 10, and then we're out in the street. So, and then out in the street is always two or three more, so we probably hit 13 out into the street.
Right. You and I both are familiar with the operation at Miracle Mile. And to me, this is more similar to Miracle Mile than it is to Grandview. Grandview is a very, very tight space, and there really are, there's no place for people to go except out on the street because of the small size of the parking lot. This, again, strikes me as being more like Miracle Mile, where during, for instance, the Huygard's tent sale, as people are trying to find parking so that they can walk down the entire length of the building, there are places, people observe that drive aisle and stay out of the drive aisle. They're not parking in it or parked in it waiting to move on. So that's what I anticipate will happen here, but I'm happy to have that condition added. I do think there is one thing that I've noted, and that is that even though the materials board is specified, we have not actually physically seen it. And I know from past experience that that's very important.
Mr. Carlson, would you bring that up to the, to the podium, central podium, please, so we can put it on the screen? I take it this is the same materials board that you showed the planning commission? I'm getting a correct from the architect. Okay. So if, yeah, why don't you come up?
Sure.
Ms. Anderson.
This is the exact same material board, so we will be using the exact same brick spec, stone, stone, metal, and light-colored brick and accent.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so Member Bennett's going to move resolution 2012-156 with the five conditions shown on the back, plus three additional conditions. Member Bennett, you've taken notes. Do you have a particular way you want to read that?
Just that the three conditions, three additional conditions I'm noting are the bike rack moved to the north of the east entrance door, the landscape, addition of landscaping between the drive aisle and the sidewalk and around the seating area to satisfaction of city staff.
There's one, one additional landscaping area that Member Sprague wanted to cover, and that was between the drive aisle and the sidewalk.
Oh, no, I had that already. I said between drive aisle and sidewalk and around seating area to satisfaction of city staff. Did I get that correctly?
And enhance color along the west elevation of the building.
That... Well, between the west elevation and the drive aisle, there's nothing. So, you're actually what... I think we're saying the same thing, just using different...
On the building, the west... There's two different landscaping areas on the west side. One is along the building itself, and then the other one is between the drive aisle and the sidewalk. There are two different... One, we need to add landscaping between the drive aisle and the sidewalk. Two, we need to enhance the color on the existing landscaping plan on the west elevation of the building.
Okay.
And then, three, add the section around the dining.
I think I'm not noting as much space along that west side of the building as you, but I'm happy to add that. So, landscaping along the west elevation, comma, between the drive aisle and the sidewalk, comma, and around the seating area to satisfaction of city staff. Additional landscaping.
Right.
Additional...
Landscaping, and then those three areas, and then finally proof...
And you know what the intent is.
Finally, proof of stacking.
Proof of stacking agreement, yeah. Okay.
Member Swenson, does that... Those conditions meet your second?
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second with those eight conditions attached. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay? Curried. All right, thanks, Mr. Carlson, Ms. Anderson. Mr. Park?
Thank you.
And Starbucks, thank you as well. All right, that's our only public hearing tonight. We're going to move to the community comment portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the matter or not on the agenda this evening? Just bear with me a second, and you'll have three minutes. And please give us your name and address.
My name is Jim Groats, and I live at 5513 Park Place. My wife Lori is here with me tonight. We would... We're here on behalf of all residents of the city, and we wish to acknowledge and thank the residents of 52nd and Abbott and the Minneapolis Community Associations that worked with us to stop what almost happened to us yesterday. They had... At the first meeting, we met Mr. Kittleson and the Neils, and Mr. Kittleson is the one that had done the sign-up petition in the website, and we basically networked with them and got, you know... Once we got started in Edina, got involved, everything happened quickly. And we're... You know, all residents are grateful for them and the work they did to make this happen, as well as all the neighborhood associations. I'm sure for all of you that were involved, this was quite an experience.
So, you might articulate, Mr. Groats, what you're talking about for people at home?
We're talking about the Metropolitan Airports Commission and their desire to bring RNAV to two corridors in Edina. This... Our city and staff had no involvement with this. They claimed they had developed this over a... Since 2007, and what they were really trying to do was to quick-sneak this in before affected areas and entire communities such as ours could have any comment or input. And from the meetings that Lori and I attended, we discovered that the cities that were on the NOC or the Noise Oversight Committee had an agreement among themselves that they would not take and dump traffic from, for example, Minneapolis into a neighboring community that was representative on the MAC. Well, because Edina had no representation on the NOC, it became very easy then for traffic... Out... Departure traffic from, for example, going over Lake Harriet or Lake Calhoun to be dumped into Edina, as well as traffic that might be from parts of Bloomington to be dumped into Edina. Basically, we were going to be taking what amounted to, according to the Delta member of the NOC, we would be taking the equivalent of half, approximately half of all Delta departures through Edina.
All right, good. And I thank you... I see the time is running up, but I thank you and your wife for the work that you've done on this, and also for appearing and testifying yesterday along with some of the rest of us at the MAC hearing. Thank you for doing that.
And thanks again to all the residents of 52nd and Abbott and the Minneapolis Associations that came to us and on behalf of all residents of Edina. Thank you.
Well, it was your email, actually, that, along with that article in the Star and Tribune, started our conversation that Monday meeting before the election because at that point, your email was the only one I'd gotten, and I read...
Lori's email.
Okay, then Lori. And I'd read it in the paper. So, that was what got, you know, our question to Scott, what's going on? And he said, "I'll find out." And so, I do want to tell you that it does make a difference when you email us because we do read it.
Great. Thanks again.
Thanks, Mr. Groats, and thanks Lori Groats as well. Anyone else? Mr. Aderhold, this must be what you were here for.
Right. Bob Aderhold, 3529 West 54th Street. I'm here because our family is planning several energy efficiency improvements to our home, including PV panels and replacing energy inefficient gas furnace and... With a highly efficient one. And in fact, we put down a deposit to get that work done. But we would like to request the council, that the city council, consider expanding the PACE program to residential projects. As you know, it's a... Right now, the program addresses only commercial types of projects, energy efficiency projects. So, and I'm assuming that you all are familiar, are knowledgeable of that... About that program. We own our house outright. I understand that has been an issue in considering this program... Extending the program to residential types of applications. But... So, that shouldn't be an issue then for this particular project. We hope that the financing available through the PACE program will make the project more affordable for us and certainly make the cash flow more easy to manage for us. So, we would like to encourage the city to explore the option of self-financing to finance projects like this to reduce the cost for people like us. We understand that if the city makes this available for residential applications, this would be the first kind of application or the first residential project of this nature and, you know, perhaps could pilot it for others that might be interested in, you know, making these kinds of energy efficiency improvements that I think the PACE program is designed to encourage. So, that's all I have to say.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Interesting. Thank you, Mr. Aderhold. We'll take it under advisement.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name is Mark Donnelly. I live at 6821 St. Patrick's Lane here in town. What I wanted to bring to you today is I know that St. Patrick's Lane is going to be going through rework this coming year, which will be really good for the street around here. However, one thing that came up that I've noticed when I went to the open house was the traffic study that was done on that street. Because we share the street, half of the street is St. Patrick's Church, we share the traffic with them. I know the traffic study was done in late July of this year. I did bring it up during the open house that that didn't really accurately reflect the kind of traffic that we see on the street. You know, it's during the summer, school is out, and also a lot of activities that are happening at the church are not going on at that time. And ask that the traffic study be redone to time of the year when a lot of those activities are happening. And I also know that was done during the summer. It was done when we were actually on vacation away. And also, there was some mention that the church told people to park on the west side versus the east side, so that would affect the traffic on St. Patrick's Lane. Whether that was done for a reason or for the construction on that side, we don't really know. So, I was just wondering if that traffic study could be redone.
Let me ask you, what would you suggest? How long have you lived in your house, Mr. Donnelly?
2000... Or 2004 we moved in.
Okay, so you've been there a while?
Yes.
Long enough to know patterns. When would you say would be an appropriate time to be doing a traffic study that would reflect normal patterns on the street?
I'd suggest not doing it during Christmas or Easter, but just during the school year sometime.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We're going to next move into the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. The first matter before us this evening in that portion of the agenda is an update on the sports dome. And Ms. Catrery, welcome.
Mayor Hublin, members of the council. I have before you tonight the sports dome recommendation from the park board. I'd like to give you just a brief background on how we got to the point to a recommendation from the park board. On April 3rd, the city council directed staff to proceed with the location phase of feasibility study and more specifically to study the site south of the South Metro Training Facility for a potential double dome. As you recall, it was shortly after the fire at the Gulf Dome, and we were considering all options for a potential replacement. On May 9th, staff received a report from the Cunningham Group and Anderson Johnson, and essentially, they said that it was physically possible to put a sports dome on that site, but it wasn't large enough to put a double dome on that site, and the cost would far exceed $1.2 million for site preparation. At the June 5th city council meeting, there was a motion that was seconded authorizing the park board's sports dome working group to reconvene for the purpose of recommending alternative sites for park board and city council consideration as to a sports dome location with a guidance that the council was not close to purchasing a site, but would not support sites adjacent to the high school or residential sites. Over the summer, the sports dome committee studied several locations, including the Fred Richards Golf Course, Pentagon Park, Braemar Golf Course Driving Range, Van Valkenburg Off-Leash Dog Park, Our Lady of Grace Church, Creek Valley Church, the Harry Lindberry property, and 5520 Edina Industrial Boulevard. On October 4th, the sports dome committee made a recommendation, and what I would like to add is just prior to this recommendation, we learned that it was not likely that we were to receive any capital improvement funding for the improvements and renovations of the fields at Pamela Park. And so, the sports dome committee recommended the selection of the Braemar Soccer Field site for further study for potential development of a sports dome. But this recommendation also includes the need for funding of the renovation of the two rectangular fields at Pamela Park to be included in this project. They also recommended that the consulting team of Cunningham Group, Anderson Johnson Associates, and Park and Recreation Consultants would be hired to complete a site feasibility study at the Braemar Soccer Field. At the October 9th park board meeting, a motion was made and seconded that the continued study of Braemar and the forward motion of the dome should not occur until the issue of expanded playing fields is addressed, solved, and budgeted for. Again, that's in relation to the loss of the capital improvement funding for the Pamela Fields, and we heard very loud and clear from both the athletic association groups and the park board that they're very concerned about adequate field space. I have an update. Since the park board recommendation, I have had many discussions with user groups and athletic associations, and we have come up with a temporary solution for field space, and that would involve a field swap, so to speak, of the Edina Football Association and the Edina Soccer Club. If a dome were to be built on the Braemar Athletic Field Site, football could move to that turfed field in the fall, and that would free up the Lewis Park fields for soccer. That would give us the ability to stop the practice, at least in a test phase, of resting one of the fields at Lewis. We rest one of those fields primarily because of the use of football. Those fields can get torn up pretty badly. If football was off that field, we would have the ability to not rest that field, and we would also have the ability on the very westerly field at Lewis to run two soccer fields width-wise, similar to what we're doing at Braemar right now. So, the Lewis Field Complex could turn into essentially a soccer complex. Soccer would be getting the soccer complex that they can really use, and football would then be gaining a turfed field at the Braemar Athletic Complex. And again, that's if a dome would be built and we would have an artificial turf field there. And with that, I open it up for questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Assistant Director Catre, a question about the suitability or the... Of that change of use at Lewis with the ice rinks that are on Lewis? Is there any pressure, any... Do the ice rinks make what you're proposing more difficult or incurred additional costs?
You know, it doesn't. And we actually met at Lewis with our public works director and with several members of our park maintenance staff to discuss the field use, to discuss the resting of the field, to discuss all impacts of the field at Lewis, and they saw no concerns, and they felt that actually the resting would be a viable option. So, it's a great question, but no, we don't have any concerns.
Member Swenson.
That takes care of trying to keep the field space you have today even, but am I not mistaken in that you actually probably have a shortage of field space for what you have currently requested, and potentially in the future, we have a shortage of field spaces, more demand is put on adult flag football and lacrosse or rugby becomes... I can see John smiling back there. Becomes a, you know, a more popular sport. Girls are playing rugby now as opposed to just the guys, and from my Blue Ribbon days of looking at field space, we got to be just in... We don't have enough.
No, you're absolutely correct. We're definitely short in field space, and the field swap between Lewis and a turfed field at Braemar is certainly not intended to be a solution to the problem. It would be a temporary solution and a nice solution to get us through until we're able to better resolve the field shortage issue.
Does it make sense if we're going to contemplate building a domed, artificial turf at Braemar, does it make sense in that project then to also either turf something else or add a field to Pamela or look at... I mean, it seems to me we have a short-term option and then a longer-range option that we really need to solve, and do we solve it as a package deal or do we solve it individually?
You know, I think that if we could solve it as a package deal, it would certainly be ideal if it would be something that we could afford. There is no doubt that we're short on field space, and as you mentioned, it's been studied years ago, and it came out loud and clear in the studies that we've done in the last year to two years that we're definitely short on field space.
I mean, I knew 10 years ago we were short, so I can't believe it's gotten better. It's got to have gotten worse.
It absolutely has.
Okay. So, do I hear you saying we would add a component of identifying additional sites for field space for the future? I mean, that's part of the committee...
Well, one, I want to know how many hours we're short for existing requests. That's just what we need today. I never like to build to existing requests. I'd rather build to projected need. I'd like to... You know, if we're going to look at fields and we're going to do the swap, which I thought was brilliant, by the way, I do know the Braemar field has always been a popular field for soccer because it's kind of a unique size in the soccer world. And if you can do something on the west at Lewis that would make that field be able to be turned sideways for two ones, but still have the large enough size so it's still a unique one-large size... still a unique one-large-size field, I think that would be great. But I'd like to know where else we can put fields, and is it that we're turfing them so we don't have to rest, or is it that we're looking at Pamela Park for another field, and if we're gonna sell geo-bonds to build a dome, are we gonna sell geo-bonds to turf something or build another field? Short-term, you know, we've talked occasionally about what would we do with Fred Richards if we didn't have as a golf course. So, I'm not suggesting we go to that as an intermediate solution, but it's certainly, you know, how we use our parks is something we always look at. You're about to do a usage survey. I'd like to know that we're doing the best that we can.
Member Bennett.
I was just going to respond to correspondence that undoubtedly, Member Swenson has seen that called for looking at Fred Richards as a possible dome site, and I think that would probably conflict with what the direction that was given to --
I didn't ask for it to be a dome site.
No, I understand you were not.
I asked for it to be, if we were gonna use it differently for fields, or park, or trail, or, you know, would we put more field space in?
Right, and I was just putting this into the record because that came forward in a fairly --
I didn't use a dome.
No, I know you didn't. It came forward in correspondence from a resident earlier today, and it was a fairly elaborate proposal, but I think it deserves --
Oh, I didn't see it then.
Okay. Deserves to be addressed, but I think it's more industrial, commercial from the south. However, it too is right up against a wonderful neighborhood on the north.
You know, the Fred Richards will come up for discussion eventually with the Pentagon Park redevelopment as well, so it kinda kills two birds with one stone by looking at that site.
It seems to me that we're really talking about more than a field swap here, if we follow through on this idea, because of the scheduling time, you can get off turf as opposed to off a grass field. So, when you read some of the correspondence we receive, where they're saying you get three times as much usage off a turf field as off a grass field, really, we've got a net increase in field space availability by following through on the notion that you just advanced, and that is moving all the soccer to Lewis, and then move football, and I take it some other sports over to a sports dome. And then maybe we think about some other things that we need to do that Member Swenson's mentioned, and, you know, I think, I don't know if McCarthy came up in the process of the discussions that you had, but, you know, turfing McCarthy is certainly something that we ought to be thinking about. I don't know about Pamela, but I do think that Fred Richards notion is an intriguing one.
Who's McCarthy? The school or a --
I think it's school property.
It's school property, yes.
It could be something akin to what we did with the gyms. You know, we used city bonding money and authority and had the city build the gyms and own them on school property. This could be a variation of that, but it does seem to me that Member Swenson's making a good point, that we need to plan for the future and start having a broader sort of vision of where all the demands are. You know, I met with somebody from the Booster Club, and they said they were sponsoring 34 sports, and there's all these new sports that have arrived in the last decade that weren't here before that we need to accommodate, and a lot of kids have interest in these different sports, and that's all a wonderful thing. So, Fred Richards is an interesting possibility for a lot of things, if we thought we should consolidate our golf operations on the Braemar Site.
Fred Richards offers not only athletic field space, but general park user amenity as well. And talking with Scott Tankenoff, who is the developer on Pentagon Park, he's mentioned that it's a nice, a very nice buffer, but he would like to see that potentially become more of an amenity. And as I look at something like a Centennial Lakes where you have this multi-generational use, active living, which fits in with our Dootown initiatives and our vision for health for the community, as well as our desire to continue to support youth athletics.
So, did you want some action from us? I know that there was --
Yes, Mayor Hugland.
Part of my materials, there was an action requested by the park board.
Yes, that is correct. We are requesting action to further study the Braemar Athletic Field Site, and what that would involve would be going back to the consultants that we used in the first two phases of the study, to go back and study the Braemar Athletic Field Site and tell us exactly what they could put on that site for a dome, and how much it would cost, and what the financial feasibility would look like if we did that.
And it looked like there's a condition attached to it, that we, should we decide to go forward with the development of a sports dome, that shouldn't happen until we get this expanded playing field issue resolved.
Can we have a parallel track? Can we ask for the cost of the dome and how large it is, and at the same time, ask for a study of needed hours and potential solutions for those, so that when the dome part of it comes back, we have the other information instead of telling you we can't decide on it because we don't have the -- yeah, I see your pen in the air. No, that's okay. I'll stop. I just can ramble sometimes.
I just wanted to give you the context of which this is coming to you tonight. Again, if you'll think back to when this issue was first kind of bubbling up in the public sphere, we had a discussion with you about, were there sites that were sort of off, you know, off limits? And you gave us some off-limits sites. You also described certain junctures in the process where we would want to involve you again, and this is one of those, and this is sort of the predetermined time period where there's been kind of the recommended site identified, and if you give us the go-ahead then to kind of dig down deeper into this particular site, that, what you're describing, Councilmember Swenson, is all part of kind of the business model that has to come forward with, how does a project like this cash flow, how does it, from an operation standpoint, and how would we propose to fund the capital needs for it as well?
I get that, but the kicker on this recommendation is that we have a field shortage too. So, the swap solves a little bit the, what you lose when you can't run soccer horizontally across the field instead of lengthwise, but it still doesn't solve the field shortage. And if we're gonna go into a dome project, I guess I'm saying that I think that we should also do that and solve our field.
You want to direct park board to study field expansion options? Or staff, or who is gonna handle the --
They're gonna determine who's gonna, they may put together the information, they're gonna bring it to park board, I'm going to assume.
Well, it sounds like you're asking us to make sure that we include, or that we build that contingency into what we're gonna be taking a look at, and we can certainly do that, and we can segment the costs, the capital costs of the soccer field expansions into that project as well.
Sure. I mean, I want to know how many hours you need today that you have requests for. I want to know what you project are the number of hours, and you can solve it this way by putting in three turf fields, or you can solve it this way by putting in one brand-new turf field, or one, these two grass fields in this location, I guess.
You're addressing a longer-term issue that makes sense to address now because we have a short-term need. So, yeah, so why not take a look at field expansion options? Obviously, the need has been studied ad nauseam. We now need to solve the problem long-term in addition to short-term, so why not have someone start that process?
Well, and I can see us getting to the point where here's the cost of the dome, here's the size it's gonna be, we've done the swap, and then, you know, we still, we become paralyzed to do it because we still haven't solved our field needs. We've added some winter field space. That would be great, but, you know, we may do a geo-bond, I assume, on this. Is that how we would fund this?
Could be. We haven't had that discussion yet, but that's one of the options.
But maybe we want to do it as a package deal.
One other option that we might want to consider as we're doing the feasibility study of the Braemar Athletic Field is potentially expanding a dome to the width that would cover the existing field. You know, what the proportional up-charge would be and what the requirements would be to have that dome pay for itself, but it might be interesting to look at two different-sized domes if it's potential on that site.
I think you should.
I think that's prudent.
I'm gonna trust your judgment in deciding what's best to look at.
Thank you.
Do you need it in a motion?
I do need a motion.
Please.
I can't just say so moved, and it would be done?
You could.
So moved, okay.
All right, all right. We got a motion in a second to have the park board further study the locating of a sports dome on the Braemar Arena Athletic Field Site, conditioned upon also studying the issue of expanded playing fields being addressed, as well as the financing for those expanded playing fields as well.
Discussion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those saying nay?
Carrie.
See, if you sit there, the so moved works really.
All right, now we're gonna go into something we call sketch plan review, and this is not a public hearing. I tell folks, this is for someone who has a notion of a potential project to come forward and get feedback from the council, and also from the planning commission. These are non-binding comments regarding a proposal, and it helps guide a potential project. It may even help guide a project in a way where they decide not to bring it forward. But it is intended to minimize the cost and give folks a sense of what the view of the planning commission and the council might be, and we have such a project potentially in front of us at some future time, and the sketch plan involves 5109 to 5125 West 49th Street, and Director Teague has this matter for introduction purposes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This property is located just west of Highway 100 on Vernon Avenue. It is just east of the Holiday Gas Station, located here. There's the railroad tracks that go underneath Vernon Avenue, located right here, just north of the Grand View District. The site is made up of three properties. There's a single-family home, and there are two apartment buildings. Overall, over these three sites, there are 10 units currently, four in one of the apartments, five in the other, and then the single-family home. This is just a quick picture of the single-family home, and then those two other existing apartment buildings. This was a sketch plan that was actually reviewed, or at least development of this property, three times by the planning commission. The first request was reviewed back in March, and the applicant was proposing a six-story, 98-unit senior housing development that would have had 71 units per acre. Then they came back in June with a four-story proposal for 60 units, again, for senior housing, that tracked out at 43 units per acre. In both of those instances, the planning commission felt that the density was just too much for the site, especially given the R1 properties that are located just north of this property. So, the sketch plan that went through the planning commission and is now before the council is for 18 units on this property. It would have a density, or at least the density that we thought at the time of planning commission, was 14 units an acre. There is a vacated right-of-way, a little sliver, located roughly right here, that we weren't calculating in the acreage. When you add that extra in, the density comes out a little over 12 units an acre, about 12 and a half per acre. The applicant was considering maybe a PUD zoning or a PRD4 zoning. In either case, comprehensive plan amendment is required for development of this site. Currently, it's guided for low-density attached residential, which allows a density between four and eight units an acre. So, we're exceeding that. The comp plan indicates for development over 12 units an acre, it needs to be high-density, and for medium-density, between five and 12 units. So, when the planning commission reviewed this, they had some concern over the density. They felt that this really felt more like a medium-density development. They thought that the, as proposed, it's a little bit tight for the site, and suggested maybe removing a unit or two to fit within that between five and 12 units an acre range. Also had some concerns about traffic. A traffic study would be needed, especially with the, there's only the one access point in off of Interlochen. And they had some concerns about what this development would look like to the north, those R1 properties to the north. So, those were some of the concerns raised by the planning commission. With that, I'll stop here. The applicant has a presentation as well.
Thank you, Director Teague. Any questions for Director Teague before he sits down?
Let's have the proponent come forward and tell us a little bit about the project.
Members of the council, thank you for taking this time with us again. My name is Daniel Hunt. I'm the president of Hunt Associates, the proposed developer of the site. Just recap a little bit, what Carrie said, we came forward with two other proposals, much larger, and through a series of meetings with the neighbors, found no common ground, and got negative feedback from the planning commission and the council, and abandoned those plans. In the interim, the residential for sale market has improved dramatically, and that was the genesis of this plan. When I'm done speaking, the architect will come up and get into some details of it, but we think we've come up with something that is a significant improvement on the buildings there. That being said, they're not much in terms of buildings right now, but it answers a lot of the opposition we had, to the height of the building, the amount of traffic that was gonna be generated from our previous proposal, the effect of sunlight on the residents to the north is dramatically better. So, I think we've answered much of the concerns. We think 18 units works on the site. You've got a somewhat revised site plan in front of you from what the planning commission saw. It works a little bit better, and, again, the architect can go through some of the details. Additionally, we've approached the Canadian Pacific Railroad. They own the property to the west. It just happens to be from a point a little north of 49th to a point south of Vernon. The land they own is extremely wide. No one seems to know why. They are open to selling some of the land on the east of what they own to the west of us. They only need 100 feet width there. They have about 170 feet width there. That would allow us to, if we include that land, get us down below the 12-units-per-acre density on it. Thus, if you don't have any questions, I'll let the architect speak or answer your questions.
All right, good. You can bring the architect up, and we'll listen to his presentation. Thanks, Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilmember. First, my name is Chris Pelkowicz. I'm with the BKV Group, the architect, landscape architect on this project. Have a revised site plan here. A few of the major pieces that we've gone ahead and refocused our energy on, particularly since some of the larger buildings have come about, is how we can better fit this project into the neighborhood. I think the scale of bringing it down to smaller townhouse-type units is really gonna make it much more, work much stronger with the residential area. One of the other major pieces we've added at this point is looking to the comprehensive plan and the Grand View Plan, and adding a, continuing the trail through this area, where we'd have certainly a pedestrian walk, and with the major change in grade, what we're looking at is possibly having it be a little bit wider, so there'd be a two-foot alley on the side, so that people have the opportunity to walk their bike up this area as well, because it is, it's currently a bicycle route to the south, continuing up to the north, and really allowing the neighborhood to engage with the retail space to the south. The, there's two unit types in this plan right now. The type A units, abutting Vernon, are two stories above grade. There's a third story mixed in, but it is completely below grade, and it's really a garage at that point. The type B units along 49th Avenue, or 49th Street are two-and-a-half-story units, and slightly recessed to grade at that point. The, it combines to be a total of 18 units, and the garages are slightly set back to allow for guest parking. The, it combines to be a total of 18 units, and the, the garages are slightly set back to allow for guest parking behind each of the units. The current plan has got, with the 18, it's got 36 garage stalls for the residents, another 36 stalls for visitors, and an additional two stalls. So currently, we have 38 visitor stalls on the plan. A few of the other pieces that were, that were asked about were, were kind of the, you know, the, the scale and how this building would, would look from the, particularly to the neighborhood to the north. The, the additional sketches are along 49th, this one is looking east, and looking at the two-and-a-half-story type B unit that, that is a walk-up with a, you know, a, a nice setback, plantings, there'd be a, a short landscape wall, and boulevard trees, and, and everything really sets the building down to fit with the neighborhood, much more so than the, the previous six-story versions that we're, that we're trying to step down. And then the, there'd be a great deal of landscape upgrades around the entire site as well, that, just a, definitely a visual impact along the site. Continuing on 49th Street looking west, if you take a look at one of the existing homes right now, the ridgeline, the, the base of the ridgeline is set to line up with that home, so it does fit within more of the residential scale of the neighborhood on the north side.
Are the, the gables, just for illustration?
The, the gables are currently for illustration. I think we're going to have a residential-type feel to it with gables and dormers and, and brick for some longevity of the materials, but at this point, there's additional study needs to be done to determine the, the materials, just on the, you know, seeing what's in the neighborhood, doing some market research as these would be for sale, and then just, you know, aesthetically, what's going to be the most pleasing for these buildings.
Mr. Pelkowicz, why two-and-a-half stories?
Because of the underground parking on the, on the backside of it, or this is, this isn't fully underground on these type B, but to, in order to have enough living space, mainly the living spaces on the first, the, up at, basically, we'll call it level two, is living room and a potential bedroom, and then on the, the upper floor, it'd be the, the master bedroom at that point.
What's the zoning over there right now? What's, what's your permissible ridgeline height?
The, the current zoning allows for 30 feet at the, at the ridgeline, or two-and-a-half stories.
30 feet or two-and-a-half stories?
I believe, sir. Two-and-a-half stories or 30 feet, whichever is less.
Whichever is less?
Yes, and we're at 30 feet with the two-and-a-half stories.
Are both A and B 30 feet?
They are not. The A per, on the Vernon Avenue side is more of a, like a 25-foot height, but it, you know, on the, on the rear side, it is, the first level's tucked under the ground with the, the large change, the large site topography change. The, the highest point at the Vernon Avenue corner up here has nearly a 23-foot grade change across the site at this point here.
Well, that's why I was kind of confused with your picture that shows the roofs coming in Vernon, what it might look like, your last picture, maybe this one?
Your Vernon, your Vernon Avenue photo?
Yeah, this one, it's this one.
Okay.
I don't think they come up that high, but.
I think per scale, that maybe the scale's a little large in this rendering. I'd agree with that.
So that's why I asked you how tall those buildings were, because if they were actually that tall and you had a 23-foot drop in the corner, they would be pretty tall to come up that high. Green space and water runoff, I guess, what would be your plan? Because, you know, about, I don't know, 10, 11 years ago, when I was on planning commission, a developer came, and he had a contract with a railroad company to buy that extra footage between the 100 and the, he was going to buy 50 feet along the railroad track there, and he was going to put a row of townhouses in perpendicular to 49th Street. I don't know, were you on council when that happened, maybe, and I was on planning?
They called the street Pukwana then, I think.
Okay, and I remem- I can remember that. So I do know that the railroad's been talked to about selling that land before, and they were amenable at that time. But I see a, a pretty dense plan here with some shrubbery and stuff, but a lot of hard, impervious surface, not a lot of green space, and I'm not really sure what happens with water runoff, or, you know, where, where one would even sit out here that wasn't on concrete or Black Tower.
Well, the, to speak to the sitting area, it's kind of the, the, there'd be decking off the, the upper levels of the units, and then each unit does have its own kind of front porch area as well, if they, if they'd like to sit there. It's really kind of the focus for the sitting then would be, you know, in those two realms. The, in regards to the water runoff, I think there's still exploration that needs to be done. We've kind of looked at some, you know, water gardens, a potential idea of, of fitting something in this space, or potentially seeing closer up to grade in this area, but we're also looking at potential cisterns or rain barrel collection as well, of something to collect the, the rainwater off the roofs.
You know, you at least have the B units, the six that you have in a row, whether ultimately there's six there or not, you at least have them facing 49th Street so that they can have some sort of connection with the street and have maybe some outdoor space, even though it's on the north side. I just see a lack of ability to be outside and, you know, they look like, yeah, they look like closed-in units, and they look too tight to me, too.
Okay.
But I do like your connection to Vernon and the possible stairs, and I like that part a lot.
I think the old, that old Pukwana project had maybe eight townhomes, eight or 10 at the max. I, I, I think it's interesting the way you've tried to engage the street up on Vernon, and, and in that, in that swoop around the corner there, you, you, the, the notion that there would actually be housing in there along with the commercial is, is kind of intriguing. So that's an interesting aspect of it that we've never seen before. It does look to me like you've tried to load a lot in here, but, you know, the, the ones that run, I think I would call this, these units parallel to the railroad track. I think that was the old Pukwana vacated street. I'm not quite sure, yeah, I'm not quite sure what I think about the density either.
Part of our idea as well with the, you know, with the topography as it is, we're trying to maximize density in, in order to kind of offset some of the, the major site costs is what we're looking for.
Well, that, that's always the issue.
Well, and the type A units, because they're tucked back along Vernon, I don't think they're as impactful on the neighborhood. I'm just telling you that if I were to be looking at a unit in this place, I would wonder, well, where would I sit, where would I enjoy the sun, where would, and?
Member Bennett?
I have a question actually for Director Teague. Director Teague, it's, in our comprehensive plan, this is guided as low-density residential attached, and thank you for your explanation earlier about the units that are permitted per acre in the different categories. With the 1.43-acre site, that would, that implies the, or counts on that additional, the vacation of the street, the purchase of the land, how many units would then be permitted in the low-density residential category? So it's four to eight units per acre. At the upper end of the range, say, what would be permitted on 1.43 acres?
I would say between 10 and 12.
Okay. So about two-thirds of what is requested here.
Right. There are currently 10 out there now.
Okay, so basically, it's, it's, unlike some parts of town, this actually is not underbuilt for its density. We did have some reference earlier tonight to goals of our comprehensive plan, and I just note that in our comprehensive plan, in this, Table 4.3, future land use categories, low-density residential attached, applies to two-family and attached dwellings of low-density and moderate heights. This category recognizes the historical role of these housing types as transitional districts between single-family residential areas and major thoroughfares or commercial districts, may include single-family detached dwellings. And the development guidelines for these, for this category include introduction of more contemporary housing types, such as low-density townhome houses, may be an appropriate replacement for two-family dwellings in some locations, provided that adequate transitions to and buffering of adjacent dwellings can be achieved. So I, I guess what I would prefer to see for this site, strongly prefer, is something that fits within what it's actually guided, which still allows up to 12 units, and would allow more of what some of my colleagues have mentioned tonight, like green space, an actual connection with the neighborhood. In this instance, we wouldn't be asking you to embrace the freeway, unlike development down on France. This is actually something where we understand this is a, a transitional site, which is why there is more development capability on that than there is within the low-density residential, single-family home part of the neighborhood. It is a transitional site, but I think that transition would be more appropriate, 10 to 12 units.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes. I was making, excuse me, a comment. We, we've done, we've done little work on the architecture of the site, so what you see is just trying to show you the massing, but all, all those units would have, would have, would have large front porches and large decks off the back. So there'd be adequate outside space, it wouldn't be like people felt they walked out their front door and suddenly they're on the public sidewalk. There'd be, there'd be program space above the front and the back of the units.
And there are some old buildings there now that are seeing their best life, if I'm not mistaken.
Mayor?
Yeah.
If I may, I could entertain flexibility in the comp plan to get some more density and make it economically feasible. I don't think, I still think what you got is too much, though, for the site, given the guide and the, the adjacent R1. So I think I, I would need to see the number of units somehow reduced. The massing seems to be accept, acceptable, but more, there needs to be more buffer space and more green space within the complex, is what I'm getting at. In terms of the architecture, it's not on the plan, but I kind of envision more of a, a row house feel, not so gable, but more rectangular with varying fronts, more San Francisco than, than that. And I know there's no aesthetic here, but that's, since we're in sketch plan review.
So you understand what we're struggling with, the, the site has two very unique sides to it.
Yeah.
You know, the north side, we, we, we have to make it work with the single-family homes there, and then on the Vernon side, we don't want it to look too residential, because it would just, it wouldn't fit too much on Vernon, so we're struggling with what to do, or maybe have two different faces on it.
Yeah, it seems, though, like if you slipped a couple units out, you'd have enough space to add the bucolic side of the project that I'm, that I'm seeing, and a little more outdoor space.
Part of?
The Vernon, the Vernon side being residential, I guess, that doesn't, that doesn't bother me to see new, I, I, I kind of like that, new use popping up on the street side from my perspective. So that's not a, that's not a concern for me, I don't know if it has something to do with marketability or what you mean by that.
Well, our, our concern is that if it's, if it's too much of a standard residential look,
Yep.
it will look out of place on that busy street. So we think there needs to be something more substantial on that facade to hold this place, or that's the point.
I would agree.
And then we can, you know, look as we further develop those two facades of how can the materials and other architectural features kind of tie it together to be, you know, be one complex at that point.
It's kind of a unique location.
Sure is. I would, I would agree with Member Sprague. I, you know, I'd have some, in my own mind, a little bit of flexibility to relative to density. I think you're going to need a little bit more to make it worthwhile, make it work, and I like the idea of doing something with that, that 1.4 acres, whatever it is, I think it's, I think you're on the right track.
The use is good, too, we need more townhomes. I always have clients looking for townhomes, we don't have a huge selection in Edina, it's a good life-size choice for people. You have stairs, so it will circumscribe the empty nester market a little bit.
It did, but Chris didn't get into it, the, the A units are, are a little bit bigger,
Yep.
and they have the master suite on the main floor.
Oh, you got the main floor master.
It's just one set of stairs from the, from the garage. And then the second floor can be two bedrooms or a bedroom and a loft, however they want to do it. And then the smaller units along 49th are a standard townhouse with, with just the kitchen and great room on the main level, and the master suite and the second bedroom. So it's slightly different markets we'll be going after.
Right.
That, that green space buffer between the railroad and the buildings has some possibilities. I mean, in addition to you potentially buying, what did I hear, maybe 80 feet of it, you know, it has some interesting possibilities in terms of creating what Member Sprague was talking about, and more green space and just that nice feel, especially when you've got that walkway coming down. I think it's an interesting idea.
Yeah, the curvy road up to Vernon doesn't work very well if you're walking, so.
Well, for five months of the year, it's a suicide track.
Yeah, it is suicide, even driving down it is a suicide track. So, no, I thought that was a great solution to connectivity.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, folks? I, I hope that provided you with some guidance.
Very good, thank you all.
So I just have one follow-up question, so, you know, a few of you are kind of in different areas, but there seems to be some comfort level with the, with the, going after the medium-density then at, at this point, continuing forward with that idea?
I need less hardscape, less lock coverage, more green space within the site plan. And then something, some, there could be a potential outdoor amenity, either it's a common amenity on the railroad side, some type of,
Or in the center, or what?
Or, or in the center, or maybe it's, the unit has a little green, I don't know, that's something to noodle on.
The consequence of less hardscape, more green space is that it affects the density in your mind. You've got a few too many units.
Yes, and, but then, then again, the, the soft, the green space will allow you to do more effective stormwater management and utilize some of the rain gardens and some of the infiltration methods that, that we are interested in as well for projects.
One, I would tell you that Member Bennett stated her position in a letter, restate it, but she probably isn't as flexible on the number of units.
Well, Manager Neal and I attended a three-hour panel discussion last Thursday on fully-developed communities addressed towards school districts and cities, and one of the things that we heard from other communities like ours facing redevelopment challenges is that they found it very important, when they were changing the density up, to have buffer between the higher density and the neighborhood. And just across the street is not, for me, enough buffer. They were talking about green spaces, parks, things that really provided something of a buffer. So I think you already have a change-up going from single-family residential to low dens- low-density residential attached, and I know that there's call for townhomes in the community and some nice townhomes. If, if with a less-dense project, you'd actually have some room in your backyard, in the backyards of those units, to provide some buffer between the units and the roadway, because that traffic isn't going to go away, and Highway 100 isn't going to go away, and the off-ramp isn't going to go away. So it's also the quality of life that you're offering to the people who are going to buy from you, and that's why I think, I think the number, the right spot really is in that low-density attached residential, both for the people who are already there, the adjacent neighborhood, the roadway, one road in and out, we didn't cover that tonight, but there is no other way out of that neighborhood except onto Brookside and up the hill, which, as you described, is a suicide track part of the year, and you're going to be putting more vehicles on it, whether it's from 10 units, 12 units, or 18, I think the lower number, the better, and would be comfortable, you know, going up to what the code allows, or what the comp plan allows.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hunt, did you state your address? Mr. Hunt, did you state your address for the record? We just, Clerk Mangon asked.
6516 Interlockham Boulevard, Dyna.
Thank you.
All right. Next matter in reports and recommendations is the Resolution 2012-146.
I'll move second.
Moving second, we adopt a resolution accepting various donations discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those saying nay, carried. Donations this period to the Braemar Memorial Fund, and the donors' names will be posted on the website. Next matter, 8D, potential ordinance amendment involving bicycle lanes on Tracy Avenue.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight we have a, an ordinance number 2012-19, which is amending the Chapter 14 of the Dyna Code concerning bicycle lanes. On September 4th, you adopted ordinance number 2012-17, which essentially amended the, the city ordinance, which had added the names of the roadways and the to and froams, basically, on the names of the roadways where we have designated bicycle lanes. With the Tracy Avenue roadway opening up, we needed to add that to the ordinance. So on, on this ordinance, the same ordinance where we've added Tracy Avenue from Benton Avenue to Vernon Avenue. There was a comment made that the, the actual bike lanes start a little bit south of Benton Avenue. The northbound actually starts about 100 feet south of, of Benton Avenue, the southerly Benton Avenue. And then the southbound actually stops right at Benton Avenue. So I did discuss this with Roger Knutson, and, and he's comfortable with it. Either way, either you're stating that the bike lanes are starting 100 feet south of, of Benton Avenue, or just go from Benton Avenue to Vernon Avenue.
What does it need to say for enforceability and then also for any potential liability or of the city?
I'll refer that to Attorney Knutson.
And members of the council. In 142001, if you read up at the top, it says, "City designates as bicycle lanes those portions of the following streets, streets which are separated and have the physical barrier of striping." So it's only those, so if there's no striping there, even though the street is mentioned, it is not a bike lane.
But there is striping there. That, that, as Director Huell pointed out, the striping on Tracy actually extends to, is it several hundred feet or?
It's about 100 feet south.
South of Benton.
South of Benton.
Right.
Then you should add that.
Okay.
If it's south. If, if you, you can have, you can have a designation, a street designated that is longer and then only have less striping, which constricts the bike lane, but you should have, it should be inclusive enough, so.
If the striping is there, the ordinance should reflect it.
Yes.
Okay. Then we need to add a reference to...
So then it would state Tracy Avenue from 100 feet south of Benton Avenue to Vernon Avenue.
Okay.
That's, that works.
And what, what about Wooddale Avenue? Why isn't that on this list?
These are actually designated bike lanes. Wooddale Avenue would be an advisory bike lane, so it's, so it's not a, a dedicated bike lane where it's bikes only.
So designation means dedicated?
Exactly, yep.
Right. And with a provision below, Your Honor, 1420.02, that prohibits the operation of any motor vehicle on a bicycle lane. So with advisory bike lanes, that wouldn't be, that provision.
So if we wanted to, well, I guess you, you've got the following resolution accompanying this one, once we designate, if this is designated as a bicycle lane, the next thing would be to reduce the speed limit. That issue's been raised with several of us with regard to Wooddale Avenue, too. The fact that it's a state aid school, we have a state aid street, we have advisory bike lanes on that street. What about the reduction of the speed limit to 25 miles an hour on that street? What do we have to do?
The way that I understand the, the state law, Attorney Knutson can correct me or add, but, but is that you have to have a designated bike lane in order to drop the speed limit to 25 mile an hour.
Meaning solid stripe?
Yep.
And we don't have enough with, on Wooddale to have a solid stripe, so it can never be a designated lane unless you took out the parking.
And as long as the topic has been raised, can I request that with the data collection that's been done, could we schedule some kind of opportunity to discuss this and possibly discuss it also with Chief Long and possibly also discuss it with Steve Clark? So rather than try to come to any, I don't know, conclusion or, or on that, on that matter, the Wooddale issue, or rediscuss that this evening without that data and without the participation of those other people? Can, may we schedule it for an upcoming meeting, even just for a half-hour discussion?
All right. So we've got a proposed ordinance. We've modified L under 142001 to read Tracy Avenue from approximately 100 feet south of Benton Avenue to Vernon Avenue. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Leaving, is this as first, just first and then doing second reading?
I'll move second reading.
Wave second reading?
Yeah. I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2012-19, an ordinance amendment concerning bicycle lanes and that we waive second reading. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Members Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Hugland?
Aye.
Can I ask a follow-up question to Member Bennett's comment on Wooddale and what's happened? If we're going to not discuss requesting a permission to put yellow stripes at least down the middle of Wooddale, I need to know when we're going to have a conversation with Chief Long and the TLC, because it can't be a couple of months from now. I need to know that it's got to come up faster than that, I guess. I need more information on the speed of traffic there, what's happened with the accidents there. I need more input.
I thought you said the data had been gathered. I didn't know the data had been gathered or is it being, being gathered?
Well, we've been gathering, we've been gathering data since the, since the start. So, but in terms of scheduling something, we'll take a look after, after tomorrow or as soon as we can to see what we have and how soon it can be into a presentation.
Okay, then the, a follow-up question to that, not knowing when it would happen, is do I assume, should I assume that, should we get permission to put yellow dash lines down the center of the road where the little tabs are? That we couldn't do that till spring now?
With paint, that's correct, isn't it, Mr. Hool?
Yes, as, with the temps dropping on Friday, yes, that, that would be a correct assumption.
Okay.
What's the timing on the variance committee? How does?
Thank you. That was...
I'll have to look into this, because it's a federal project, so it might be a little different. So I, I need to, to do that, that background research and get back to you.
I guess what I don't want to do is end up a month and a half or two months from now having a meeting and then deciding we're going to put a request in, and the request takes three, four, or five months to process. And now we're in June and we still have the same situation there. And we've decided we needed to change it. So I'm not sure whether we should have the parallel track of at least requesting the yellow dash center line now so that we can move on it as soon as it gets warm enough, if that's what we choose to do, or wait until we've had the meeting and then start that request.
I'd actually like to have a more thorough discussion on it. I understand that the center line is of concern to a lot of people. I would like to discuss some other issues as well, and I would be more than happy to make time on December 4th to come early if we've got staff availability and can pull the parties together on that time. I noticed that we do start at 5 o'clock with an existing, already scheduled work session, but I would be personally happy to try to make it earlier to facilitate an earlier discussion of this. Karen?
I, I could perhaps offer another alternative, and we could pair it with our topic on December 18th, well, that work session, which is reviewing our citywide work plan.
I was reacting to not only Member Swenson's urgency, but the, just, I, I think it would be good to be able to tell people what to expect. So I would really prefer December 4th. I'm sorry, it's a, it's a good offer, December 18th, but I would prefer the earlier.
Manager Neil, you had your, you didn't put your pen up, you had your finger up. Normally, Mr. You can't...
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
Is that a different approach? Because the pen up is a sure sign for me.
Depending on which finger. It was this one.
It was the index finger. Let's be clear.
You know, in terms of, of how quickly this gets advanced to, I, I guess it depends on, on the urgency that you're feeling from your constituents in terms of how you want to address this. I can tell you that the evening of December 4th is, is going to be a pretty significant council meeting, and I, you're gonna, adding more to your day that day, I wouldn't recommend. But if, if it is, if it is a such, if it is an item of such urgency that you think you need to address it that, that night, we can prepare for that. I think we could give you a better preparation on the 18th, and it won't make any difference in terms of how that syncs up with a state or a federal approval of, of a change if you decide to make one.
What about the 11th?
I would not recommend it on the 11th either, because you're gonna have...
I guess I don't...
It's, you know, I, I guess I, I'm telling you that, I, I would say, I, I understand if you're feeling a sense of urgency about this from constituents, but in terms of our ability to effectively address the issue or deliver something that you might approve, that is not going to happen anytime soon, because if it involves putting paint, if it involves putting paint on pavement, we won't have pavement temps that we can put paint on pavement for some time now.
No, I totally get why you don't have pavement temps. I guess I could live with the 18th. I think the biggest thing is, you know, the mayor's worked hard to have a public meeting about it with the residents. We're still getting a number of emails every day. I'm sure Chief Long's getting a number of emails every day. We've had, are we at four accidents, Chief?
Four, but two related to the bike lanes.
Okay. You know, I just, I know we can't put any yellow stripes down the middle now. I know the tabs helped. We actually got some emails saying that the tabs did help, and I thought they did, and then unfortunately, a week later, it's known. But you warned me that might happen. But I did appreciate the tabs, and I, actually, a number of our drivers did, too. So I just, my concern is that we do this in a way that we can let our residents know that we're really working on it. We know that it's an experiment, you know, but if it's something that we need to make a change on, I want, and that change might be something we need to wait for warm weather, I want to be ready to go the day that the weather is warm enough.
Okay.
Do you agree?
So let's, let's shoot for the 18th of December, then.
Yeah, the 18th of December. I think we need to, I think we have, need to have the data. I think we need to have a full and complete discussion, and I think that'll enable us to do it. So I, again, prefer to do it then rather than process more tonight.
Thank you, Karen, for that idea.
Okay. All right. We're on to...
Have we, have we taken a vote on?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, so now we're on to...
We're on to the speed limit.
80.
Wayne?
Actually, Your Honor, I'm going to take a, I'm going to tee this one up for the chief. As, as Director Hool has noted in his cover memo to you, this action is a housekeeping measure, and typically will, will have these kind of recommendations and reports on consent agenda. The reason this one is outside consent agenda tonight is that we're getting, we get fairly, we received a lot of feedback when speed limits were reduced on 70th Street, and we will receive more feedback on this one as well. And we just want to make sure that council is, is fully informed of the entire context of what happens when we reduce a speed limit on a, on a, on a road like 70th Street or a road like Tracy Avenue, because you'll get feedback from folks, you'll get positive feedback from people who like the lower speeds, but in some ways, we might be creating higher speeds in, in other parts of adjoining neighborhoods. And, and the chief wanted a chance to address that, so I thought we'd just try to briefly do that tonight. And there isn't any, there isn't much we are asking you to do differently than what's in this, but other than to keep it under advisement for the future. Chief?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's a little past my bedtime. You guys do work late, so I'm, put some notes down so I don't forget.
This is early.
Yeah.
We're stallions. We can go to 1, 2, 3 o'clock.
I was surprised the police department was still open this late, but I guess we are. I just wanted to cover some notes and just give a differing opinion on the 25 mile an hour speed limit and some of the experiences that I've seen and what we're experiencing in the police department because of these. I put a picture up that I will cover in just a minute, but our first experience with the 25 mile an hour zone was really on West 70th Street. This experiment really had mixed results for the police department. Our overall assessment was not as glowing as one would expect with lower speed limits. As was the intent, this diverted traffic to other roadways such as Normandale, West 66th, and the flowered streets just south of 70th Street. Public safety was not consulted about this change, yet the impact on our operations was pretty significant. West 70th Street typically required very little police response. We did conduct quite a bit of enforcement on West 70th, however, the accident rate had been pretty low. Upon the change to the speed limit on West 70th Street, the diverted traffic changed the landscape of our operations. Although the attempts to keep pedestrians and bicyclists safe on West 70th Street seemed ideal, we created a significant problem for the surrounding streets. Keep in mind, the speed limit on the side streets is still 30 miles an hour, so we pushed traffic onto narrow streets that had many more homes and children. The drivers that we forced onto residential neighborhoods are not familiar with the areas that they were cutting through. They were looking for shortcuts, they were becoming frustrated, irritated, and sped on our most populated streets. The intent to divert traffic off of West 70th Street may not even have been successful. According to City Engineer Hool, traffic numbers are coming back to where they were before construction on West 70th Street. It's very difficult to enforce traffic laws in these narrowed streets such as West 70th and Tracy. Our officers are not comfortable writing tickets for citations such as 31 and a 25. And if we're not going to write tickets, we certainly don't want to make stops on those streets because it's going to back up traffic. The number-one killer for police officers is traffic stops, and on these narrow roadways, there's just not much room to do so. Two weeks ago, while an officer was making a stop on Valley View Road, a bicyclist rode past and told Officer Bokes that he was blocking the bike lane. Be a good time to point out that right now, we have about a 99% failure rate for bikes to stop at stop signs. But now on Tracy Avenue, I think the 25 mile an hour zone has created a terribly dangerous situation for those residents that live on Warden and Johnson. On the photograph that I have placed here, you're facing north on Tracy Avenue towards Vernon Avenue, and this is Warden Avenue where that car is turning. You go down one block, you take a left onto Johnson Avenue, and you can shoot right up to Vernon Avenue. And the speed limit on Johnson is 30. The way that northbound Tracy is laid out, as you approach Vernon Avenue, the dedicated bike lane travels all the way up almost to Vernon. And those of you that travel in there know that traffic backs up during rush hour. And with the speed limit being 25, whether it's perception or reality, drivers just feel it takes longer. So I can tell you as somebody that's lived in this area for quite some time, as I approach Vernon Avenue, with the speed limit being 25 and the way that the roadway is configured, there's no way I'm going to wait in line when I can just shoot down Warden up Johnson at 30 to 40 miles an hour and beat all that traffic that's backed up at Vernon Avenue. So I really feel bad for the people that are living on Johnson. I think the 25 mile an hour zone displaces a lot of traffic and actually creates more of a danger than the safety it's creating by slowing the drivers down on Tracy Avenue and on West 70th Street. Tracy Avenue had had virtually no accidents since 2001, and again, just like 70th, had really required very little police response. But the new speed limit, just as it had done on West 70th Streets, now created a problem for the police department that didn't exist previously. The collateral damage of this change has been seen. The residents from West 66th have already made their voice heard at council meetings, and I really don't want to wait for a statistic on Johnson Avenue after we displace traffic there. Again, public safety did not really have much input on these ideas, and I hope you'll take into consideration our firsthand experience of these changes. Engineers and elected officials get to move on to other projects, while public safety has to deal with this on a daily basis. West 70th Street continues to use up many of our resources due to complaints by residents, and now Tracy Avenue has already started to do the same. It may be just the driver's perception, but we're certainly creating unintended consequences when the speed limits are changed.
Member Swenson?
We haven't changed the speed limit on Tracy yet. What are the complaints on Tracy?
Well, the speed limit is actually posted at 25, and we also have a digital sign as you go south on Tracy Avenue.
Right, the digital sign.
Right. And the, and the digital sign's posted...
When did we post it at 25? Because that would have been, what?
That, Councilmember Swenson, that was actually part of the project. It was a motion made...[1772.47]
made the night...
No, 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 but did we actually put the speed signs up?
Yep. The project is all, the signage is all done and that was part of the project. So I'd say this is a housekeeping item.
Okay, no, I've seen all of it, but I just missed the 25 mile an hour signs, to be honest, because I traveled that one about once a day, so I'm glad you're not ticketing.
Yes.
I've been really good at doing 30.
We're not ticketing.
Member Bennett, I'd like to, member, Ray, go ahead.
Thank you. Chief Long, when you described the traffic as backed up on Tracy at rush hour, it sounds like, is it possible that people are making a choice to go to an alternate street to get out of a queue waiting to make a turn onto a major roadway? Because it said Tracy essentially tees at the country club neighborhood. You can cross Vernon and go into that neighborhood, but most people aren't traveling that way.
Highland's neighborhood.
Highland's neighborhood, sorry. What did I say?
Yeah.
It's okay. In any event, they're waiting to make a turning movement, either left or right, and so is that alternate choice because of the speed limit or that, is that alternate choice because people don't want to wait in traffic and then if they know of an alternate route? And I think that's probably more of a rhetorical question, but, and I appreciate your reference to perception or reality, but I think we, we have a big charge for public education here and I'm not putting responsibility or blame on anyone, but I know that there are more deaths between, when a pedestrian is hit by a vehicle that's going 30, or 35 or 40. I know the chance of death rather than injury is much, much greater for that child or that adult or that senior. And so for me, the speed limit is not because of bicyclists. It's, it's, the presence of the bike lanes allows us to do something that the state legislature hasn't gotten around to doing, even though we know that 25 is a much more reasonable speed in residential neighborhoods. Cities like Minneapolis have the authority to do that with their parkways. I know you know that. And I know that Director Hul has gone to the, has served on a task force that looked at lowering the default speed limit, and so far, there's appears to be a standoff between urban areas and rural areas, rural communities. But to me, that's the chief thing, is that we know the safer speed, slower speeds are safer. And these, this is a roadway that leads to schools. There are children on foot. There's a major park there. And we also know and can measure the time that's actually lost. And it would seem that a couple things that we could do, and again, not to put responsibility on the police department to do something that's not in its job description, but I would think that we can do a better job as a city of informing people of why lower speed limits really are desirable, why they're good for children, growing things, seniors, people moving around the community on foot as well as on bike, and also that there's very, very little time that's actually lost. And maybe start to help people move from perception to reality in their assessment of the situation. So I'd like to see us look at that and I'd like to see us work a whole lot better with public safety than it sounds like we are when we're making these decisions. I don't know about my colleagues, but I'm not moving on, you know, in terms of correspondence, in terms of telephone calls, in terms of dialogue with people. This is something I've been assessing Wooddale. To me, it really is an experiment. It is a study. And I'm out there driving it, walking it, viewing it, and trying to see what appears to be working and what isn't working. Are people getting it? And, and to me, same thing with lower speeds. My practice is to drive 25 miles an hour no matter what the speed is posted. My children don't want to drive in my vehicle anymore.
Right.
Or be driven in the vehicle. But anyway, I think that's a safe speed for residential streets.
I agree with everything you said, and I am not opposed to the lower speed limits. My concern, I would just like to see a more blanketed approach because I feel bad for the, for instance, on Johnson Drive, because that 5 miles an hour, you're right, from that 25 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour significantly increases injury and death. So we are much safer at 25, but the displaced traffic that we've seen, at least from 70th, is, and the complaints from the neighbors are, they're, the drivers are getting so irritated back, especially in the flowered streets of Trillium, Hibiscus and that area, because their loss or disoriented, they're trying to get shortcuts. I'm just, I'm just concerned that we don't have a more blanketed approach. We can't create a 25 on Johnson Drive, but I know as well as anybody, because I grew up in the neighborhood and I live in the neighborhood, is that when cars cut through there, they're gonna be going probably 35 to 40 miles an hour just to avoid that 25 mile an hour zone on Tracy. But I agree with everything you've said.
Member Sprague.
Thank you. So Director Hul, in terms of 70th Street, I know you did measurements. What was the 85th percentile speed following the, the design changes in the street?
I apologize. I don't have those numbers with me tonight. I wish I, they're sitting on my desk.
They were 38 before the construction.
They were 38. They dropped them. It dropped down to like around 32, I believe, somewhere in there.
From 40, I think it was like 32.
From 40 to 30, the death, the fatality rate is cut in half for pedestrian. Being on a bike, if you've ever been someone driving 32, 30 versus 40, it's a real different perception of safety. There's trade-offs when, when, with complete streets. You, when you reduce, and you said something about the intent to divert traffic, volume is not what a complete street is there to, to address. It's there to address speed, the calmness of the street. The, the trade-off is your flow, your level of service goes down. 70th Street's a perfect example. And I was talking about this with Member Swenson. So now you have longer queues at rush hour and people have to take more time to get through the corridor. However, the experience for a pedestrian, a homeowner, a biker, is it's a much more civil place to live. I mean, there's no question about it. The motorist is inconvenienced. That is a trade-off. But we've made a decision as a council and as a community that we're not gonna be a car-centric community any longer. There are gonna be trade-offs that come with that. As Member Bennett said, we, meaning the public representatives, staff, certainly the police department, one of which the functions is education, should be working to inform people about these trade-offs. We don't take them lightly. We made them intentionally. And we understand that, that there's going to be changes, but we have to educate people on why we've pursued the changes, why we think that's good for our community in the long run. And so on 70th, one of those trade-offs was in the short term, and I'd like to see the data to confirm this, is that there was some diversion of traffic. However, I'm, I would guess, my hunch is that it's fairly close back to what it was a couple, when was that? A year, a year ago it finished construction? Was it a year ago? Time flies. And I think the same experience will be had on Tracy. It's going to take some time. With regard to the posted speed as opposed to the design speed changes, I believe that we should not be making speed changes on a road-by-road basis. I believe we should be exploring with the ETC a network speed. We have these connected collector streets. And maybe we want to say from point A to point B in the city, that's the 25 mile an hour highway or complete street. And that would give more continuity to the driving experience. It would help people navigate the system better in a car, in a bike. And so I'd like to have more, more of a comprehensive approach. Maybe that would, you know, address some of the transition that happens when you all of a sudden throw 25 into the mix. Especially on Tracy, what we've only done is a 25 all the way to, no, it's not...
Just to bend.
It's halfway. So that makes it even more complicated. We have this disconnect. So I, as I was talking to Member Swenson about this today, I just, I just think that it needs to be addressed more comprehensively. We talked earlier this year about network standards for, bike network standards for pavement markings, for signage. This is another thing that could lend itself to a thoughtful discussion by the ETC. So we can have more of a comprehensive approach and, and see the larger vision of what we're trying to accomplish. And then the final thought is, I'm not sure what the internal communications mechanism is when we're communicating policy. That's not in my realm. But I would, I would like to see, I know that we had a failed opportunity externally on the Wooddale changes and getting in front of that with the public. And we basked it together a handful of changes at once, so we made it more complicated for people to adapt. But in the future, I would hope that the police department would be our partner. You're, you're there not just for enforcement. Enforcement is only temporary. You're there also for education and outreach, and those are the things that, that last, that will change behavior longer than enforcement, as you know. So I, I would like to see that partnership developed and utilized in the future. And I think then we can avoid some of these issues both internally and externally.
Member Swenson?
I view the 25 mile an hour zones to be part of what Member Bennett said in part of a safe routes to school. And I appreciate your thoughts on, on diverting traffic, because you're right, sometimes we do. Sometimes it's traffic that diverts traffic. Sometimes it's roundabouts that divert traffic and sometimes it's speed. And so for me, I look at this as, as a school walking zone, kind of that walking shed. You've walked, you've lived in that neighborhood. There are some moms that walk their kids to school up Tracy. I'm hoping they have a better experience. We also have a couple of really bright crosswalks coming across from those dead end streets on the west side. I'm hoping those are safer for kids to cross so they can actually walk to school. We did get a few comments from people recently that live on there that just love their new street. So that made us feel really good after doing it. And it's certainly quieter than that old concrete street was. So I would support this because to me, it's a walking shed and it's a safe routes to school. But I do get the drift that we don't want to be sending traffic into areas that aren't used to it.
Right. If I can just add a couple of comments to Member Sprague. As far as education goes, the police department is fortunate that we're out in the community firsthand and we have, I almost feel like we're leading the way with education. In the, in the last three days, we've stopped over 27 bicycles for running stop signs in that area. And we're not ticketing. We're just warning and kind of advising them. And we've stopped a number of motorists now for the, for the same thing. So we are out there with education. I agree. We do need to team better. As a matter of fact, I met with Jennifer Janovi earlier today in trying to come up with a better plan and what we can do. We've even talked about doing something similar to the coyote presentations, just holding seminars for people to come randomly and learn about bikes. So, so we are reaching out, but the, the difference in, in the, in the reference that I was making by people get to move on and the police department doesn't, is there's a difference between reality and what's on paper and what we would like to happen. Because what we're seeing in the cars and in person 24 hours a day is not what you're describing. And that's, that's why I bring this up is, and I, and I had that conversation with Jennifer earlier today, is on paper, things look great. It's wonderful. And I'm all for it. I, I, but the reality is, when you're in a patrol car and you're seeing it, and you're hearing your patrol officers talk about it, it is different from what's being described here. And I, and I just needed to emphasize that. And then I'll, I'll shut up.
But short, short, you're talking about behavior, driving behavior. And I would make a difference between short-term reaction to a facility and adaptation, which takes some time. See roundabouts, see 70th Street. We have other examples of new facilities on the road that require adaptation. In the short term, you see the negative behavior and, and the unintended consequences. But in the long term, 70th Street, to me, is an example of how people can adapt and learn to drive and behave differently on a street due to design changes due to education.
Member Bennett?
I think in the city of Minneapolis, where I go to church and spend, spend time walking and driving, I note that they are able to pick a parallel path for a bike facility that isn't necessarily something that also serves as a major roadway. For instance, Lyndale, they've done a lot of combing on Lyndale with bump outs and beautiful islands, and it's much more, but the bike path is on Bryant. But what we have in this city is a pattern of development that has some grids, but they're, they're almost like grids with a twist. Because you get Wooddale, which goes through, and then you have streets that end at 58th and at Gulf Terrace. So we don't have that parallel through street. And Tracy is a similar situation. Wooddale really is an essential route on the east. Whatever we, whatever careful decisions we make with it going forward, it is essential as a bike route, because there's really no alternate. You got Xerxes, which isn't gonna be any better. You have France, which isn't gonna be any better. And then it's Wooddale, and then it's Highway 100. And on the west, Tracy is the same. We don't have another street that goes completely through. So you've got the vehicles making the turns. And maybe one thing we look at is, I know the city of St. Louis Park has done no turns on, during certain times of day. And we, I know from a long, long ago presentation by SRF, they were talking about how enforcement doesn't work. But the woman from SRF who was describing this experience had been stopped on one, had made one of those illegal turns, forgotten. It was after school. She was with her kids. And five or six years later, she was still talking about it. I bet she told everybody that she knows. So there's enforcement value beyond, you know, her being stopped. She was never gonna forget it. So what I would like to do going forward is, I would like to know, I would like to work better with public safety. I would like to know what other types of enforcement we can use. Granted that it puts an enforcement more burden, but it gives us more tools to prevent some of that drift from, especially commuting traffic that's gonna maybe create a problem with speeding or get lost and frustrated. Another thing that I would like to look at is this network idea that Member Sprague describes, because again, we only have certain routes that work. The bike plan was not made carelessly, and I think people here are really trying to make careful decisions. It was made to connect things in the community, like the pool, the only outdoor pool, the high school, our only high school, with people who wanted to get there. So these routes make sense. Then the question is, what we do with the routes that makes it safe for everybody who needs to travel on them. And slowing down on Tracy's not a bad thing. My kids are both out of high school, but I was holding my breath on some of those mornings when they were carpooling to school. I know that 62 and Tracy is, a lot of high school kids have some crashes there. So like to talk about, again, what we can do on those routes to make them work for everybody. And finally, I'd like to talk about some parallel planning, to be mindful of exactly what you're describing, so we don't unintentionally set up something that is not at all in anybody's best interest or what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, thanks.
Your Honor, Mr. Mayor.
Can I move 80?
Sure. I just wanted to give you, to let you know that one of the things that we're, we've talked about doing in response to this, to try to bring a little bit better system of getting public safety entities involved in the review process, is to include them at the ETC meetings where they're, where they have their kind of review and comment of, of design. So Director Hul and I have talked about that. When we get to that stage and, and the next round of projects, we'll be doing that. And I'll also just emphasize with you that part of, part of what we want you to take away from that presentation is just more data points that you can, that you can use when, when you have to make these kinds of decisions. And there's, there's not a questioning here of, of who sets direction for whether the city's gonna be car-centric or not car-centric. I think that's pretty, that's very clear to us. That's your role and you have the discretion to make those kind of decisions. And you've made them fairly consistently all, all the way along. So we're, we take our lead from that, but we also want to, you collect a lot of feedback and input from people, staff do as well, and we need to pass that on to you occasionally so you know what, what we're hearing too.
I, I can appreciate that, but I also want to say, you know, reading, reading the police chief's blog, I, I get the sense that there is some resistance after the fact to the philosophy. And reading it on a blog versus having a discussion about it, to me, is a different experience as someone setting the policy. And I would appreciate the internal discussion before it, it goes out to the world.
Is there a second for my motion?
I will second.
Discussion. Quick comment from me on the conversation we just had. I, I think we probably have to recognize that we are a car-centric community, but that doesn't mean that drivers of vehicles, motor vehicles, don't have to behave in a civilized way. As we try to add these other modes of transportation into our system, our, our methodology has been to create systems where they can coexist safely. And so while the car ends up being the predominant mode of travel and probably always will be in our lifetime, we're still trying to accommodate these other modes of movement on a non-motorized basis. And we need to be able to make sure that they get done, it gets done in a safe way. And, and for me, there's nothing wrong with asking a car driver to behave in a more civilized way. And, and down a street like Seb, West 70th Street, I get a lot of pushback from people that are pretty close to me, that they don't like the way it works out. They, they liked being able to go down a residential street 45 miles an hour, you know. And you say to them, hey, this is where people live, you know. So it takes you a few seconds longer to get from France to Highway 100. You're, you're going through a neighborhood. This is exactly what we designed this to be. And when you go over on Tracy Avenue now, and you look at Tracy, it, it's a beautiful looking residential street, even though it's probably a, what is it, a collector?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a collector. So now we're gonna say... Yeah, so it's a collector. So now we're going to say, you've got a school at Highlands, you've got a school at Countryside, you've got churches, fire stations, all kinds of things along the way. We're going to say, slow down. And they do slow down a little bit, but that doesn't mean they're going 25 miles an hour. Because now that we know the average speed on 70th Street after a year is 32 or 34 miles an hour. And we got it tagged up for 25. If they're sneaking over, what's this first street north of 70th? Dunbury? If they're sneaking over to Dunbury or over to Johnson, I think we ought to be thinking about some of the authority that we have, that we know we can sort of spot, we can set up spot speed limits in certain neighborhoods. As I remember, we can do this on an isolated basis. One of the reasons we didn't want to do it was because part of the street might be signed for 25, and then part of it's 30. You know, if we need to modify behavior, if people are cutting over to Johnson off Warden and going up Johnson 40 miles an hour, we had to do something about that. And the same thing on Dunbury. If they're going down Dunbury 40 miles an hour, either sign for it, or ticket them.
Just ticketing for 40 and a 30 mile line, guys.
Yeah.
I don't think we got to start putting spot speed limits.
The important part is the period of adaptation. You need, when we're putting in these network changes, we have to be patient. We have to observe and see how the driver behavior changes over time. Because they do adapt. 70th Street, they adapted. It took them a while. There was a lot of diversion. Some of the volume went away, now it's back. But people, some people enjoy that drive now. I've actually got calls from people who like driving across town on that, from one side of Adana to the other.
And I know from people living north and east of you, that are not right on 70th, that really appreciate it as people who live in your neighborhood, saying, hey, I now feel safe going across 70th with my kids.
More connected both sides.
I feel a lot safer moving around the neighborhood. And that's an important thing, very, very important thing. So, all right.
A question. How long was that lot empty at, is it Wooddale and West 70th Street?
That was some years, at least five. Well, it's been vacant.
Oh, it was way more than that, because I remember.
It's been vacant for as long, it was here in '06.
Probably closer to 20 years, actually, based on when I was teaching at the Y. In any event, beautiful new home. And so I was happy, to me, that seemed to be a byproduct of having that work completed in that way.
Another positive.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second. We've had some discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried.
And colleagues, what about the idea of the ETC looking at this more of a network-wide analysis of speed and what we want to do?
Does the area have a work plan now?
Well, we're talking about other standards for the bike network. So it might just be a discussion point, is all I'm saying.
Well, I think there were three things that I think I mentioned. And it sounds like one of them's already in the works with the police department being part of the street reconstruction, actually, street reconstruction reviews or coordination with the ETC. I think that's excellent. And that addresses that point. I think the network is a very important one. And then the third thing I mentioned was alternate enforcement, which the mayor just spoke to, which is if we do have an issue that's been set up, nobody has the right to take a speeding vehicle and turn it off into another neighborhood, understanding that creates another enforcement issue. But if that can be coordinated, that was the third thing I was hoping for.
I think you have, you know, we're going to be discussing the work plans for the upcoming year. If that's an item you want to have on the ETC work plan, we can.
Yeah, I support.
Sure.
Put it on there. Okay. Next matter is 8F.
I requested this.
Member Swenson.
Just recently, there was an article in the Sun Current about what Eden Prairie was doing with their council and Mayor salaries. And they were moving them up. And they did it before the election, so they'll move up now to what they call a median level. They also give money for each of their council members for technology on top of what their salaries are. But they were moving their salaries to 13.5 for the mayor and 10.740 for council members. We did a study looking at average salaries. And you have a copy of it right here. In the meeting.
No, that's not, that's not.
No, what do you have here?
Do we have the?
Oh.
We, I'm sorry.
You couldn't find it? Okay. We can have a discussion about this later. Because as Manager Neil pointed out to me, that you have to vote on salaries before the election and they're, so these, if we voted on them now, would not go into effect until the 2015, which means the last time we raised our salaries was, we took a jump in 2007. Well, it finished the jump in 2000, the end of 2006.
You took the, yeah.
So we haven't changed salaries for six years. This will now make it eight years. I know that the amount of work that we do is, and especially the amount of work the mayor does, and the amount of meetings he attends, and the importance that is to our city is huge. So this isn't really that we're paying for what we do. But I think we have to try to keep our salaries around what the norm is for around us. So this would at least do that. But we're two years behind by the time these even go in again. So all we're doing is telling people that you want to run for this office, you know, you're going to have the lowest pay in every city we live in. And I don't think our residents expect that.
I just wanted to follow up. I look at this as, of course, this is after my term is ended. But I look at this more as trying to attract people to take on the responsibility and have enough, I know most people are internally motivated in public office. Certainly everyone on this dais is, you know, contributes a lot of their personal time to the position that's in a real honor and privilege to serve the residents of Adana. But I think it's necessary to keep up with the times, but in a fiscally conservative way, and not be at the top of the pack, but kind of be middle to the bottom. And this would put us in mid to bottom range for salaries and kind of honor our longstanding fiscally conservative perspective.
Member Bennett?
The sheet that's in front of you is something that I requested earlier today. I recall also, Member Swenson, seeing that information on the compare and contrast. And I'd like to see it again before I make any decision. What's in front of us this evening is what would have happened if we had followed the ordinance and actually had the reviews that the ordinance called for. Because I think past councils have struggled with this. And as Member Sprague points out, you don't want to, none of us is doing this for the money. On the other hand, we all have expenses associated with the work that we're doing, and we're all devoting significant time to doing it. And in order to have some compensation for that work, a past council, I believe you were serving it, Mayor and Member Swenson, took on something that not only created, voted a raise, but also created a mechanism where there was supposed to be review. And that review was tied to the percentage increase for non-union city staff. And so had we followed that process of review that was decided on in 2006, the number that you see, I guess, at the bottom of each column would be where we would be today, which still, it sounds like, would be behind other communities. What I'd like to do going forward, if, well, what I'd like to do going forward is, you look again at this information, look again at a survey of other communities, and take up the issue sooner rather than later. I don't feel comfortable voting on the proposal that's in front of us this evening because it's so much different from where we are today. But I do.
That's what happens when you don't do anything about it for six years.
That's true.
And you were low to begin with.
Well, that's true. Because, I mean, but again, we don't have that information in front of us this evening, unfortunately.
Okay. I'll, can we table this till the next meeting? And then could you provide it?
Yep.
You know, and I guess, I love serving the city, but between the MAC thing and everything else, I probably, and you've, we've all had in the last three days over the weekend alone, I've probably had 25, 30 extra hours that I don't normally put in, that I'm away from my family doing this. And that's great if it doesn't go on all the time. But it's a big job sometimes.
One of the things that my family is noticing is that.
And it's getting bigger. It's not less, it's getting more. And that's fine, as long as we recognize that. But to not recognize it, I'll stop. I'll just.
I was going to say, I also.
Got a motion to table, is there a second, until December 5th?
I'll second that.
Fourth, December 4th?
Yeah.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to table this matter until December 4th, 2012 meeting. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Next is 8G, which is setting meeting dates and holidays. Clark Mangan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last year, the City Council instituted the policy with dates of religious observance. I have mapped those dates on the calendar that's presented in front of you. As well, in 2013, your new terms of office don't begin until the 7th of January. And so for that reason, there was a suggestion that we, since there are five Tuesdays in January, that we move the January meetings to the 8th and the 22nd to accommodate the new term starting on Monday. So with that, we have, the August meeting would need to move to accommodate Night to Unite. In October, we would need to move October 15th to avoid the Muslim holiday of Eid al, I know I'm going to say this wrong, Adha. We need to move the council meeting to Monday, November 4th, to avoid Election Day. And I believe Manager Neil has another proposal he wants to talk about.
Well, and mine is not, my proposal is not to move a particular date, but to ask the council to consider canceling the July 2nd date. We did do that this past year. It was a little different situation with the proximity of July 1st, or excuse me, July 4th. But we were, if we have that, if we don't have a first meeting in July, we have that entire week off for council. And we can plan around it if we know that that's the case.
Well, it's also a week that we have a lot of residents off and not here. So we try not to, here we work, we work, we're trying not to put anything important on it, and then we show up anyway. So yes.
I don't know how I feel about that. Meeting only once a month is, we got a lot of work to do. The second, I mean, the third, the night of the third is always a vet's dinner, so you're here anyway. The fourth is a parade day. I'll do what my colleagues want to do, the majority of my colleagues want to do. But I have no objection to working on the second.
Well, we are here, but cities, I mean, staff may have the opportunity to have more of a break if we're not holding a meeting. I do agree with Member Swenson that we've really endeavored over the years to schedule that meeting as lightly as we possibly can. And I believe one year, we actually had a 15-minute meeting.
We did, which I drove back for.
I don't believe I've ever been present in a 15-minute.
Yeah, I remember that one.
Ever since I've been on, it's been four hours or longer, so.
And that would be my only concern, is if we're putting things off to other meetings. But again, to Member Swenson's point, we're already doing that because we don't want unfairly, we don't want to schedule something on a date when people can't make it because they are off time. So I guess unless there was some kind of pressing business, and then we could schedule a meeting if we had to, I would prefer to have that meeting canceled.
I would be inclined to go with Member Bennett's concept of not scheduling it. And then, I mean, we just added December 11th as another extra meeting, so we have three in December.
Good point. Member Sprague, any thoughts on that July 2nd date?
You know, I'll be around changing diapers and chasing kids the whole time. So whatever you guys want, I'll concur with.
Well, let's, I think Member Brindle would probably concur with Member Bennett and Member Swenson. So why don't we cancel it for now? We'll reschedule it. We know we can use it if we need to. So, and then we got to vote on the whole schedule anyway. So take the second off, and then we'll have a motion. We need a motion here.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the 2013 council meeting dates and the draft calendar for board and commission meetings. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And that's it for the reports and recommendations section of the agenda. There was a lot of correspondence attached, based on the airplane traffic pattern matter, matter that we've been dealing with here in the last 10 days. And we will now go to Mayor and Council comments. And Member Sprague, we're glad to have you back in town.
Well, that was my leadoff, of course. Great to be back and see you. I missed our spirited discussions. I heard from a resident, I haven't driven down, that the Xerxes Avenue has been restripped, and that that turn lane issue at the parking and the turn lane at 62 going southbound has been solved. Is that correct?
It is, correct.
Okay, wow. That action happened in like two weeks. I was telling the resident, these things may take six months or a year. And all of a sudden, three weeks later, you're incredible. Can't believe it. But they also mentioned, and this kind of follows the theme of the evening, that they've seen more stacking of cars now, now that they've gone from the four lanes, free, you know, free range to two lanes. And again, it's one of those trade-offs when you stripe down a street and do a road diet, you're going to have more stacking for a while. And I tried to tell him that there will be a period of adjustment, but then things will probably normalize as they did on France. I mean, as they did on 70th, as they'll do on Tracy.
They knew that, that was the risk, that they had stacking during rush hour. But they were, they would rather have a two-lane road than a de facto four-lane road. As you said, a free-range four-lane road is.
Yeah, I mean, think about France before. It was, it was just, it was like a highway. I'm sorry I missed the town hall meeting. I heard there were a lot of interesting points brought up. Someone talked about a trail on the west side of Minnehaha Creek off of 54th. I think that was, I read that somewhere.
Minnehaha Avenue, or it's on the west side of, it's on the east side of Arden Park, I think. I don't think it was actually a trailside.
Okay. Well, it made me think about 54th. And I've been driving that a lot and seeing a lot of people walking in the right-of-way in the street.
It'd be me.
I've seen people, women, pushing strollers. And I look forward to discussing a sidewalk on that corridor, because I think it's gravely needed based on the traffic I've seen there. And I did stop and talk with a couple of the residents who would love to see an amenity there. Saw some people at the bus stop, kind of sitting out in the, a few feet in the street too. And it's just, it's not an excellent condition to be in. The other interesting note I read in the ETC minutes regarding their communication committee that's been formed, which I think is great, and will do a lot of good. But they talked about online forums for meetings. And I thought that was kind of an interesting concept.
Can't do it.
But no, you can, you can if you don't have enough, if it's, you don't have the quorum. Then it wouldn't be a public meeting law violation, correct?
It's dicey. We get conflicting legal advice about, not conflicting legal advice from our city attorney, but there's conflicting legal opinions about it. And whether it constitutes, you know, easily can constitute a serial meeting if one other person drops into a three-person discussion. It is probably the most frustrating and misunderstood question we get from our boards and commissions, bar none. They just don't believe we can't do it. And they just, it just seems so counterintuitive.
But if you had two, however many, less than a quorum of committee members facilitating the discussion online, and told the rest of the committee, don't drop in, then you'd be okay within the realm of public meeting laws. You're not at the quorum.
So that's just two people emailing. So that's just two people emailing each other, or text messaging each other?
Well, online forum, I'm thinking more like a chat room or some type of.
Are the committees subject to?
No.
Yes.
So then the committees.
Committees of the council are?
Oh, yeah.
That's all of them.
And you're planning, the safe answer is, all city committees are.
The committee, though, it's a quorum of the full commission, isn't it?
The committee is subject to public meeting law.
If it's more than a quorum of the commission.
Or a committee.
The meeting of the committee is subject to.
Let's take an example on the Transportation Commission. So we have two people on the communication, three, and the Transportation Commission is nine.
But it's the Communication Committee.
So you're saying it's a quorum of the committee, not the, I always thought that it was the, isn't it, if the committees form, the subcommittee of?
If you form a subcommittee.
Yep.
And it's a formal committee, then that's a committee. But, you know, if you have two people talking back and forth online, that's, theoretically that's okay, if they have more than five people in your committee, but the concern is someone else will pop in, or someone, one of those two talking to each other will talk to a third.
I guess I was looking at this more of as a engaging the public, online chat facilitated by some committee members, less than a quorum. It is a quorum of the committee, not the, the subcommittee, not the quorum of the committee as a whole?
Correct, and the subcommittee is subject to municipal meeting.
I wasn't at the Transportation Commission meeting, so I'm not sure of the genesis of your conversation. The three-person communications committee is interested in, for its own purposes, using an online tool called Trello.
Okay.
To facilitate its conversation. I'm not aware of any conversation where a group wants to use another platform to engage the public. We already have that, we have that with Speak Up Edina and some of our other social media tools.
So they're talking internally?
I think they're talking about.
And how would that jibe with the public meeting discussion? They can't do it, so we can't use Trello?
Apparently not, though, admittedly, I've, it's been happening.
I look forward to more information on that in the future.
We do, we need to have, we need to have some more dialogue about this, because we do tie our, with our working groups and committees and subcommittees, we tie ourselves up in some knots unnecessarily, I think, sometimes, especially with regards to our communicating with each other. So we do need to have a little bit more time to research that and to respond to what's the right and wrong way to do it.
Well, let me know.
Okay.
To jump in, I know your work sessions are really busy, and I'm not gonna suggest anything for December fourth through December eighteenth or any other time.
Thank you.
But I think at some point, it might be a good idea to have a discussion on this in a kind of an organized fashion, and walk through it and determine what a serial meeting is, what's covered by the open meeting law, and how so easily it can be violated, and people are watching and keeping book on people, and you have to be very careful about that.
Right. Good point. Do you have anything else?
Nope. Thanks.
I have a resolution I'd like to present on the NOC. Do you want it now, or do you want me to wait and, okay. Want to give a copy today? So, based on what happened recently with the airport noise and our obvious lack of knowledge about what was going on, I think for the, first thing, we need to get a presence for Edina on NOC. So this is a resolution requesting that the Metropolitan Airports Commission create a designated community representative position for the city of Edina. You know, we were able to delay a decision, we don't know how long that that will last for, based on what the FAA will request coming back, you know, it's been put off now for what, are we at sixteen to twenty months?
Correct.
And I want to thank the mayor and our city manager and all of our residents again for everything they did to do that. But we just can't be blindsided like that again, and we've now started the conversation that we have promised our residents and our city that we will continue about where are we going forward with this, and how are we gonna react, and, you know, what is the information that we need to be better educated and to help our residents be better educated?
The indication that we have received from our representative at the MAC, the Metropolitan Airports Commission, and a few other members as well, is that they would have to change the bylaws of the NOC to allow our participation as a member of the NOC, but unless you ask, you don't get it. So I think this is a good way to approach it.
Yep.
Is to pass a resolution requesting that the MAC do whatever they need to do to get us on the noise oversight committee, and then I think we can figure out who that representative ought to be. For most communities, it's a city council member.
Fine.
And I think that we'd, we'd want to think along those same lines. Just one little typo, oversight is spelled in the other, the other way. It's S-I-T-E at the end.
Is it?
Yeah. Pretty sure.
That wouldn't be grammatically correct.
No, but it does, at least the things I've seen say oversight in that.
As in like site location, rather than site view?
Yes. O-V-E-R-S-I-T-E is what I've seen, but regardless.
Okay, well, we would make that change.
The intent of the resolution is clear.
That's how they spell it, I'm looking at their.
S-I-G-H-T?
It's just like it's.
Over.
Okay.
Oh, it is? Well, then, somebody corresponded with me incorrectly from the MAC.
Probably.
Probably.
Okay, this makes more sense.
Yeah, it is grammatically correct.
So if you're comfortable with this, I would move Resolution twenty twelve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, that we request the Metropolitan Airports Commission to create a designated community representative position for the city of Edina on what they call their advisory noise oversight committee. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carry it. And then I'm gonna ask Manager Neal, when he makes his comments tonight, to talk a little bit about what the Chair of the MAC recommended, as did one of the other MAC members, who's from Eden Prairie, that we ought to consider establishing in our community our own advisory committee with respect to airplane-related issues, including noise, and then we can figure out how to populate that. But I'll leave that to Manager Neal to talk about in his comments this evening. Member Swenson, anything else?
Well, are you gonna talk about this recommendation from the Transportation Commission on living streets, 'cause they're requesting money that isn't in our, as far as I know, isn't in our plans for next year?
The, the purpose of putting the advisory communication items from boards and commissions on your agenda the way that we do is to provide extra attention to them.
Information, so, okay.
And that was something we discussed with you. But we, we haven't come prepared to respond to that tonight.
That's fine.
But if, if part of what happens by, by putting it on the agenda like this is that you give us some direction to get a response ready, or to put it on a future work session or something like that, that's, that's how I would envision you doing that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that? I thought we had TIF funding set aside for this purpose?
Not for this purpose, we couldn't.
More, oh, it was for the Southdale Transportation Study, but not for, so the transportation planner coming in, that's on TIF? The transportation planner?
No, that's on franchise.
That's not, oh, that's, okay, that's franchise, okay. So, and, and that person's, this is different than that person's work?
This is different than that person's work.
That's, this is phase two of the bar engineering work?
Right.
Okay.
Well, you could, you could think of it that way. This is essentially, I mean, they, they made a request to include a, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, allocation in the budget. I didn't recommend it to you, based on how I would prioritize things, but you get to make the final decision on that. So this is their, I think their.
Well, how do we, how do we complete that, that stated priority without the consultant to complete the phase two?
We just, I think there's other ways you could do it, and you could.
Internally?
You could, you could do some internally, you could ask the commissioners to assist with it, you could take a living streets policy from some other community, and you could modify it so that it fits this community. I think there's some ways you can do that without having to have, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar appropriation for that purpose.
Can we, may we have some advice in a different setting on that?
Yep.
Probably connected, possibly with budget discussions.
Yep.
Also, I will say from my personal knowledge of members of the ETC, following up on the discussion that we had about how our work has grown, I think their work has grown immensely, and I don't think viewing the, this as work that could be done by the ETC as volunteers is practical or.
Reasonable.
Possible.
Yeah, I just, we, but I would say in running for reelection this year, a lot of message that I got in running for reelection is be careful how you spend your consultant's money. You're doing that too much, too often, and you're amassing large bills that way, not in relationship to our whole budget as a whole, but, and so I just, I feel that I need to listen to that a little bit, and if that means that we slow things down or do things differently, I'm, I guess I'm more sensitive to that, but that's just because that was the message I received a lot from running for reelection.
How does that segue with our priorities from our retreat, though? Because living streets policy was at the top of that list.
So we work on ways to figure out a more cost-effective way to come up with it.
We do the work, we just do it more cost-effective.
Manager Neal mentioned modeling a community that has an existing policy.
Right.
I believe LA has a policy, a great policy that could possibly be adapted. The question would be, what would be the cost figure or staff time associated with that, and we don't know that.
Or wait until we have a year where we already have it in the budget. You're looking at trying to insert it into a budget at the beginning of December, when we're already at the end of our budget cycling for this year. I, I don't ever like adding anything.
Well, I guess.
At the end.
When we had a surplus to spend and there were certain priority items, that could have been one that would not have been a cost that would have replicated itself, because we don't like to build in cost structures.
Right.
And that would have been an item, and it, anyway.
It wasn't.
The question of outsourcing versus insourcing, I leave to your judgment, but we did state we wanted to finish this priority. They've been, to your point, Member Bennett, the ETC has worked tirelessly on this, and I think we should keep the momentum going. It ties into a lot of the work we're doing, is gonna make road reconstruction, I think it'll help the process be more understandable and smoother from all vantage points, including engineering and the public. So I, I guess.
I can guarantee you, the final budget will reflect your priorities, because you will approve it, so.
Only us.
You, you know the goal, and you tell us how we can accomplish it in a cost-effective manner.
There was a question about the PACE program, and can it be used for residential? Do we actually have an answer for that?
You know, at this point, our PACE program is not.
I don't think so.
Applicable to residential, and, and that is an issue kind of nationwide, and it has more to do with mortgage-backed Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac mortgages, but as the gentleman noted, he owns his house free and clear, that might be a different issue, but I would say it's not as, it's maybe not as simple as it may sound, so.
No, and I remember that the legal work that we had to do on the first and the second one was fairly significant, and that was an issue for the cost of it, so that could easily, on a project like he was talking about, I would think, offset any advantage to using the interest on a PACE program.
I think he had, I think he had two questions, two requests of us. One is that we consider including residential property in a PACE program, and that's something we could send to the Energy and Environment Commission to look at, just like we did the commercial side of it. The second part of it was, I think he was saying, you know, don't go out and look for Sonoma Bank or someone else to do it, think about doing it from the city standpoint, buy your own bonds, basically, and use my house. Use your special assessment authority against my property to assure that I'll repay this, this loan that you own. That's another policy decision I think we've never talked about, as to whether or not we want to buy our own bonds, or whether we can even legally buy our own bonds.
You can't. That's not an option that's available to us right now. But it is an option that, that the city, I think, the council, and I've talked to a number of legislators and Department of Commerce officials, that we ought to be able to have that authority to do that, and, but it's gonna take legislative change at the state level to get it.
But we can still answer the first question.
Yeah.
You know, and because we know that there are other funding sources around, that Bremmer Bank has indicated an interest in PACE, and they've indicated an interest in PACE because of the fact that the special assessing power, the city backstops the loan. So whether it's residential or commercial, I don't think they.
They have good collateral.
Okay.
So I think, I think it's something we ought to take a look at, and send it to the EEC and have them look at it.
And then the only other thing, Director Hool, you were just coming back in when we had a resident get up and talk about the traffic study by St. Pat's on his street, and he had a concern, you probably are aware of it, that it was done, okay, perfect, I just didn't want you to miss that. And I'll let someone else talk about the town hall, and we've covered the MAC, and I don't know, what else is, oh, I did my first, on Dewtown Walking Event with a neighborhood project that's going to contemplate putting in a sidewalk, and it was the Concord area going up to Concord School and around School Road. We met Sunday for a couple hours, and walked the two-block area and just talked about that, and then afterwards, they, when we were done with that, I told them they could ask me about anything else, so we went from Waddell Avenue to monster houses, to lots of subdivisions, to a lot of other things. But it was great, there were about twenty-five people, and Sarah in Dewtown did a great job organizing it on short notice. So I was the guinea pig out of the blocks, and I would say to you guys that are all gonna probably do one, it's a lot of fun, and I had a really positive reaction from my neighbors, which was great, about this sidewalk, and not only the parents of school-age children, but people that had lived there for a long time, had raised their children, they weren't there anymore, and they were still desperate for us to do it, because they knew that it really needed to be done, plus two moms that live three blocks away that wanted to know when we were gonna start doing the stub by Southview and Concord, going up Concord to the north of Southview into that neighborhood, and I said they had a street reconstruction project coming, I think, in twenty nineteen, maybe, and that they should talk to us then, but that I'm sure we were looking at moving sidewalks farther along that road.
That just made me think of something. The green, the new, the new crosswalks that we've been using at schools, are those drifting down into the Safe Routes to School plans? Because I, I look at that complex there and the cross, the crossings at, and it came up in correspondence not too long ago, at Southview, and I'm just wondering how that's shaken up.
Internally, we're looking at our crosswalk policies and seeing how we can incorporate that into, so we have a hierarchy, as we get closer to schools, that we incorporate the green, green crosswalks.
Okay. All right, Member Bennett?
Thank you. Following up just briefly on the town hall meeting, it was a good turnout and really spirited discussion. It sounds like, Member Swenson, you had a follow-up town hall meeting, and I think one of the action items coming out of that is on the development mass in question. Also, I know we have some correspondence from the Morningside Neighborhood Association in our packets, and I think they are requesting that there be some kind of response. I think there are some specific questions that were raised at the annual meeting that people would appreciate some answers to, and then I think there's a, this is consistent with the information that came forward at the town hall meeting, a lot of it from Morningside residents, but also from others, is the prob, some of the issues have already been identified, now what is going to be done? issues have already been identified. Now, what is going to be done to address some of the concerns? We talked about, I think, on September fourth with the Planning Commission, the retaining wall questionnaire issue, you know, sort of egress window, retaining wall, when there's not access to a person's property retained on that property because of things that are built into the side yard setbacks. So, I know that I've had some contact with people since even the town hall meeting where people are hoping that we will follow up, that the council will follow up and that city staff will follow up. This, this pertains also to the airport, air, flight pattern discussion, but everyone certainly was civil, friendly, and engaged in discussion at the town hall meeting. Also, the huge volume of correspondence that we've had over the last couple of weeks about the airport discussion, I think that almost without exception, it's been very, very civil and pretty informative, a lot of it. To be really brief, and I know that Mayor, you may talk about this and Manager Neil as well, it's my understanding that there already are flights over Edina. There are departures, there are arrivals, and there are overflights. And for the most part, I think people have accepted that with the benefit of an urban airport, there's a shared burden of airport and flight pattern noise. What was proposed with this most recent matter was that there be a concentration of those flights into chiefly two corridors over Edina for departures. There also was an arrival corridor as well, off of two runways at the airport, and that was what people were objecting to, was that concentration over very defined neighborhoods. There was frustration, I think, among residents about information that could not be obtained. Even people who went to both of the public open houses had asked the question how wide the bands would be. Are we talking a block, two blocks, four blocks? That answer was not available, and it wasn't available at the meeting, at the Metropolitan Airports Commission on Monday either. I attended that meeting. Mayor Hovland spoke, Manager Neil spoke. I listened and took twenty pages of notes. Some of my takeaways from that meeting were that, did, the representative of the FAA did not want to give this information, but ultimately did. This plan, RNAV it's called, of taking the tracks, the flights that are currently controlled by voice communication between pilots and air traffic controllers, and running them according to GPS or, and then being able to condense them into tracks, that plan has not been fully implemented at a single airport in the United States. So, the proposal to fully implement it at this airport was actually a proposal that hasn't been followed, it hasn't been proposed anywhere else, let alone adopted. So, that, to me, was a really significant takeaway. There also were some concerns raised about backups, redundancies, risk of failure. There were questions raised, and I think excellent comments by Mayor Hovland about where the technology is advancing, and is this a stopping place? Is this really where we want to put, as one resident put it, all of our eggs in a single basket with holes in it? There is also some question about whether or not there has been a shift of less noisy equipment out of MSP, out of this airport, and noisier equipment into this airport, and that was raised by several residents and correspondents. That what we are hearing from residents about an increase in noise is certainly perception, but that if we could obtain the data, and there are no measurements that are taken in our community, we might find that it actually has data underneath it. So, it was a very worthwhile meeting. The Star Tribune reported this incorrectly. The motion that was actually adopted by the MAC was made by Greg Foster, who is Mayor Ryback's appointment to the MAC. Both the mayor of St. Paul and the mayor of Minneapolis have appointments.
Right.
To the MAC, and it was his motion that ultimately prevailed, but I believe that the Star Tribune attributed it to Mr. Boyven, or at least said that.
Yeah, they indicated that in the paper.
Yeah, it was our.
They do have one portable noise thing.
Okay.
They, the rest are all permanent in certain locations, but they, they did tell a set of breakfast meetings Saturday morning that they owned one portable noise machine.
But haven't taken measurements yet.
No.
In this community. And that was also the, the lack of data, the lack of environmental study. When, when questions were asked about when that information would be obtained, the FAA representative said that after the approval. So, the decision was supposed to be made in the absence of information. I think it was a, a good decision. Oh, he also said that they couldn't implement partially. There was conflicting information as to whether it could be implemented partially, which was the vote of the MAC. It certainly will require more study, but it sounds from the testimony in net that more study is needed anyway. So, very, very worthwhile meeting and an excellent result, and thanks to everyone who participated in the thoughtful correspondence that we received. One other quick item, and this is something I've referenced a couple of times this evening. Manager Neil and I and Superintendent Rick Dressen were able to attend at the University of Minnesota Law School, a developed suburbs forum sponsored by the Institute on Metropolitan Opportunity and Professor Myron Orfield. It was actually a pretty, it was a very worthwhile.
I've heard him speak a number of times. He's very.
Well, the data is quite interesting, and he went through the data quickly, which he had done when I heard him speak earlier this year. The, a Robinsdale School District Board, School Board member, Melissa Kroll, former superintendent in Eden Prairie, and then the superintendents of the Hopkins and Roseville School Districts were on the school panel. That was followed by a city panel, and that was Brooklyn Park, Director of Community Development, and the mayor and a council member from Richfield. In addition, the St. Louis Park City Manager and an Oakdale City Administrator. Very interesting information and a lot of good, and much of it applicable to some of the, to issues that we're facing here.
Good. Thank you. Well, for my report out, since our last meeting on the eighth, night of the eighth of November, I met at, at the request of some of the neighbors along Wooddale Avenue. We met at Wooddale Church to talk a little bit about the, the work we were doing bike path related, and we had Steve Clark there from Transit for Livable Communities, and he answered a lot of questions. It was a pretty vigorous discussion, as Member Sprague likes to say. And I, I, I think he got on his, Steve Clark got on his bike that night and rode away in the dark. I wonder if he was thinking all the way home, what did I get myself into by agreeing to come to that meeting? So, as Member Swenson says, we need to, we need to get back to these neighbors. We need to, they understand that we're looking for data, and that we're trying to make some decisions based on, on data. They understand that there have been videos done and other things that, that we can address, but some of the things I think we could do without looking at the data, and some of it was signage-related, and I think maybe Director Hul, you may have done some things signage-related already out there. That was at least one of the things we talked about. We talked about speed. We talked about other things that could potentially change based on data, but we'll let the data drive us on those decisions. On the, on the twelfth of November, was, was invited to the National Merit Scholar Reception at the Community Center. We had, I think, a dozen National Merit Scholar semifinalists and probably twenty-eight commended scholars, and they all, of course, invite their parents and their favorite teacher and talk about their favorite teachers, and it's always a terrific event. And then on the thirteenth, Manager Neil and our, and my wife and I, and Mary Brindle went to the Diwali, Diwali event at the Hindu temple, and that was a great experience, the Festival of Lights, and I don't know if you intend to comment on that or not, but we had, we had a wonderful time, and people were so gracious, and we had some very, very good food, and, and saw some terrific entertainment, young, young people dancing. It was, it was wonderful to have it in our community. On the sixteenth, in the morning of the sixteenth, Member Brindle and I cut a ribbon for the new food court over at Southdale, and then, which is a beautiful addition to that mall, just terrific. Member Sprague?
I couldn't make it. I had the kids, but we came later, and Laurie Van Daleen walked us through, and it is, it is amazing.
Yeah, it's just, it's a wonderful addition to the mall, and the rest of the mall remodeling looks terrific, and so it makes me feel very good about the decisions we made to, to be their partner in some of these things and get that parking rights squared away as well in the process and our, and our well. So, then, Member Brindle and I went over to meet with the FAA and MAC staff to get some technical background on this matter that was heard by the MAC on Monday, and that was whether or not to implement this RNAV system, both in the southbound direction off runway seventeen and also westbound and northbound over, off runway thirty right and thirty left. That was very, very helpful. Representative Earhart was there, Representative-elect, Representative-elect Earhart, Representative-elect Franson also had a representative there as well. And then on Saturday morning, Manager Neil, Member Swenson, and I met with three MAC commissioners, and the gentleman who runs the, the MAC, the whole airport operation, Jeff Hamill, and that was a very productive meeting. Helped again, I think, kind of set the stage for some of the things that happened on Monday. Monday was the largest crowd I'd ever seen at a, at a MAC meeting. And I think the, you know, Member Swenson said earlier that the grots is because they were observant about what happened, what they saw in the newspaper, followed up with some initial meetings, sent an email, and it, it triggered a, a lot of activity in Edina that resulted in, I'd say dozens and dozens of people showing up at the MAC meeting, thousands more writing, participating in this petition process, and I ended up sitting next to the Kittlesons that Jim Groats talked about, very nice people from southwest Minneapolis. We had several elected officials there. We had probably sixteen public speakers out of that big crowd that was there. I would say close to forty, forty-five percent of them were from Edina that spoke. And of course, as usual for Edina, a very articulate group. And one of the interesting things that Member Bennett mentioned is that Member Foster, the Greg Foster from Minneapolis, made a motion after the presentation by MAC staff about this RNAV system and the, and the notion that the FAA wanted to consolidate these routes, actually condense them into a very narrow band. They, they even called them tracks. The, the crosstown track and then the northerly route, they called it, which basically run right through, runs right through the center of Edina. And as Member Bennett points out, we had about, we get about four hundred and forty takeoffs a day over Edina right now, but they get dispersed in a, rather quickly so that everybody shares in the pain. The notion of this RNAV was to consolidate that traffic over these two tracks, so there'd be about a hundred and thirty-five planes a day tracking down the crosstown, and then about another a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and fifty tracking through central Edina, which was an increase of about a hundred to a hundred and fifty percent over what's happening now. The FAA in that Friday meeting admitted that they had done no noise studies in Edina or southwest Minneapolis, had done no frequency of movement studies because these planes were going to come out, basically like a freight train effect on this singular track every five to ten minutes all day long.
We were against it.
It would have had quite a profound effect on us, I believe. But the good news is that the, that the motion passed after a lot of debate, and, and Member Bennett, I think, set forth the motion well, and that was that they implement RNAV except off runways thirty right and thirty left, which means that there was an inherent understanding in that motion that they had not given us an opportunity to be heard. They didn't tell us about it and didn't give us a fair opportunity to voice our opinion, and I appreciate that from the MAC, that they recognized that and tried to do something about it. Another thing that was quite disconcerting when the FAA official spoke from Washington is that they have not completed their environmental assessment, and, and yet they wanted the MAC to go forward with a recommendation to the FAA that they be allowed to implement these, this two-track system without having completed that environmental work. And we don't even know really what their environmental assessment consists of. I don't know whether it's just an, an air quality issue, or if they're actually going to look at affect on communities. It sounded to me like they were almost done with it, and we know they haven't been to Edina to look at noise impacts or anything else. So, their two main factors of, of seeking to do this for safety reasons and for efficiency reasons, to me, fell flat because they've got a hundred percent safety rating at the airport, and when efficiency starts rubbing up against an adverse impact on humankind, for me, humankind ought to win out, win out every time. So, I'm hoping that now we've got about sixteen months to get some work done. We, one of the things I want Manager Neil to talk a little bit about tonight is the formation of a, internally to Edina here, an Airport Advisory Committee. I had a sidebar conversation following the, the vote at the MAC with Jeff Hamill, and he said, I think you guys ought to form your own airport advisory group out there, and Rick King, one of the board members from Eden Prairie, said the same thing. So did the chair, and so I think we need to talk about that and, and get folks working right away on what we need to do. But we need to know what we need to do to make sure that we're adequately protected when the FAA comes back in sixteen months. So, enough on that topic right now, but a very, very important topic for us to, to continue to work very diligently on. And I think that, that is it for me. It, there was a lot of airport-related activity over the past week or so, interrupted briefly by the Veep banquet on Friday night. The, we enjoyed sitting there with the mayor of Bloomington and Susan Freeman, who runs Veep. So, Manager Neil? Oh, excuse me. I've, I've got one other thing. Member Bennett mentioned this, and I think we need to move relatively quickly on this, and that is this, you know, we, what have we issued now? Eighty-two tear-down permits in this year?
Eighty-five.
And there's been a significant number of them in the Morningside District of our town, and I, I know the Planning Commission is working on this study team that's going to try to get input data on how much house ought to be built on a fifty-foot lot. Should there be some design restrictions on that so that we make sure that we maintain the character of the neighborhood? I, and I know one of the things the Planning Commission is worried about is that they need to create some common rules that apply to every fifty-foot piece of property in Edina, and I don't think that's true. I think other cities have done this in a way, and maybe Attorney Knutson could opine on this, but I think we need to go back to this discussion we had a year or two ago about character districts, and you define, this is my personal opinion, you define what it is about a particular district that creates that character that people enjoy, and I'll use Morningside as, as an example. People are thinking they want to live in Morningside for certain characteristics, and when they come in there and do a tear-down, they destroy the characteristics of the neighborhood over time, and, and, and so the very thing that they want, they're ruining in the process of getting to live where they want. Now, that's not happening all the time, but it's happening with enough frequency where we need to be moving on this issue as expeditiously as we can. So, keep that in mind, I think, as we visit with the Planning Commission on this. And people that were there at the town hall meeting asked us to move in a diligent way on it, too. We've got so much on our plate, it's hard to keep all the balls in the air. But we, that's one thing that's really important, I think, for our town. We need to be able to maintain neighborhood integrity, but still allow people to live in a modern way, and, and that's not that easy to always figure out, but we need to be working on that. One other final thing. When I was door knocking and, Member Swenson made me think about it when she was talking about lighting. There is no lighting on Fifty-Eighth down by Pamela Park. It's completely dark down there. No street lighting.
Coyote.
And, and also at, at Roseland Park on Sixty-Sixth Street. There's no lighting on Sixty-Sixth Street along the pathway there. I mean, we, I don't know what that's going to, it's going to take to do that, but we ought to be thinking about lighting along the, the south side of Roseland, maybe all the way around Roseland, and then also on Fifty-Eighth Street in that, in that low spot, when you're down by Pamela Park, there's no lighting down there either. It's, it's pretty bothersome. It's, and there's no sidewalk, of course, down there. So, they're walking in the street and there's no light. There's no streetlight for, for motorists to be able to recognize pedestrians in the street. So, that's, that's on my list. Manager Neil?
That's quite a list.
Take a deep breath and pass it off to you.
Okay. And, and I think, you know, it's a, also a good segue for our December eighth retreat, you know? And I think trying to plan our, our work, and what's, how we will prioritize things is, is really an important power of the council, to direct kind of the, the effort of, of staff is important. We think that's important because we want to accomplish our goals. The mayor asked me to comment just a, a little bit on airport adv- The mayor asked me to comment just a, a little bit on Airport Advisory Committees.
Excuse me, one second, could you please remind me of that? Because I just made a commitment in the last, to do that walk that Member Swenson went on on December 8th, so I am now...
This is more important than that.
Oh, I know. I, I now have to, I have to change.
You've just got the tone of...
Well, and I, I just didn't check my calendar because it's in my calendar.
December 8th? Then we even have a time, I think, right? Karen?
Thanks, then I don't feel so bad.
Nine to one, that's a retreat?
Not, oh, nine to one?
December 8th, it's not even on our calendar.
It's, it's...
Is nine like that, that's the trip we have practiced and not really starts?
Susan had previously talked to you about this, and, but it's not on your, it's not on the printed calendar.
Okay.
Twelve eight, nine to one?
Nine to one at what location?
Bremont.
Bremont.
Thank you, sorry about that.
The, one of the takeaways, a couple takeaways from the discussion with MAC and just learning more about their process there has been that we haven't been very well connected to them from a communication standpoint, which from their vantage point, I'm sure they're looking at now and regretting. I think that a fair amount of the, if not most of the angst and anger that was generated by this proposal could have been handled much better through them engaging us rather than not engaging us. And we're going to take the bull by the horns and, and engage them on this issue, and the resolution you adopted tonight is, is step one in that process. We will turn that around and, and I'll make sure that it gets into the hands of the right people at MAC and, and also pursue the, whatever process we need to, to follow, whether it's at a MAC meeting or at a NOC meeting or whatever meeting we have to show up to to, to do personal advocacy for this, we'll make sure that we do that. We have assigned Chris Ocker to be sort of the field reconnaissance person on our staff to kind of track MAC activities and, and information from them, to be more active in doing that from City Hall. So she will be, she'll be doing a fair amount of that kind of thing, too. And when there's, when it's necessary for, for me or for elected officials to, to be present or to give voice to something, we'll make sure you have plenty of notice to, to prepare for that. I think it was clear to, it was clear to me, and I think from, from my discussions with you, Mayor and Councilmember Bennett, that what we got on, what we got yesterday afternoon was really more of a reprieve than, than a stay, I think. So if somebody gives you 16 to 20 months of preparation time to prepare for round two, I think that's really incumbent upon us to be prepared for round two. Because this will come back, it's, it's a technological innovation that we've been successful in putting off, but most technology doesn't get put off for long, and so we need to be ready to prepare for that. Part of that preparation tier, too, is also the, the idea of establishing some kind of community advisory committee. I've had experience with two kinds of airport experience, airport committees in my career. One for a municipal airport in one city I worked in, and the other was in Eden Prairie, where Flying Cloud Airport is part of the MAC system. And so I've had the experience of dealing with all, all of the MAC people that we've met so far in that capacity. That was a, that airport committee was, was very well-run and managed, and Rick King, who is now on the MAC, was the chair of that airport committee and did a fabulous job of really running a committee and, and having a fairly tight focus of, of agenda. So if you looked at their agenda and it maybe had two or three things on it for a whole year, you'd think, gee, why can't they do more stuff? But, but they did it in such depth and such quality that it was really very well done, and, and they had a high regard. The council had a high regard and the public did as well. So I think if we want to look at that as a model, we can. Perhaps you want to, you want to consider this being an ETC assignment. It's hard to say how, how big this assignment is, but I had at least one resident who called me and suggested that to me, so I'll suggest that to you as well. But we'll do, in the interim here, we'll do some research about what other communities in the Twin Cities have done who aren't, who don't have airports in them, how do they handle that issue? We'll bring back a proposal for you to take a look at and consider the pros and cons.
If we do it in term, do we need a budget for it?
Perhaps, but, you know, maybe no more than what you'd do other...
Okay, I didn't know if you do your own studies or if you request studies or what?
Most of the time in, at least in my experience with airport advisory committees like this is you're working with MAC or you're working with FAA or AOPA, the airline, the Pilots Association is a very important advocacy group for reports.
If I might, and this isn't, I by no means are, am intending this to be a last word, but the ETC, I was on the ETC when it was first formed, and we had more of a focus on big development plans and, and sort of macro transportation. And I think it's been a much more effective body since it has focused in more on community-based transportation, sidewalks, just the network of moving people around the community. Also, looking at the correspondence that we've received over the last week, it's clear to me that this is material that is very technical, very, there's specialized kind of knowledge that's required, I think, to adequately understand it. It may be that there's help needed to communicate that then, but I think, and also clear to me from the correspondence, that we have people in this community, retired pilots, people who've worked in airport administration, that I think we have the talent pool to constitute our own committee without giving that task to the ETC. So that would be my preference.
Well, like I said, we'll pull together some information for you from what comparable communities do, and we'll bring, bring that to you for some consideration, but we are going to be working on that. And I'll cut my list off there because we still want to have a closed session with you tonight to review some status updates on some real estate purchases.
Thank you for coming, guys.
Good night.
Can I make a comment if you're done with your meeting?
No, we are, we are in adjourn, we're not going to adjourn.
We are in adjourn, we have to go into a...
We can't, we can't adjourn until we get done with closed session.
So thank you.
May I, may I make a comment anyway? I, I spoke with Mr. Gordon yesterday on a different subject after the meeting, and the comment he made to me about this petition, he said to me, my wife asked me, shall I, shall I sign the petition? And he said, no, he said, no, don't do that. So they do live itself as Minneapolis, so his wife had a conservative point, too.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, Mr. Mayor, just so, for the record, the, the closed session...